Good afternoon.
Let me turn that on. Today is Tuesday, April 26, 2022. It's 4:00 PM. We are in the city chambers and I call the fire rescue district governing body meeting to order. Commissioners present are Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner White, Mayor Emrich, Vice Mayor Langdon, and Commissioner Luke. There is a quorum present for this meeting. Also present are City Manager Fletcher, City Attorney Slaton, City Clerk Taylor, Recording Secretary Baker. We have Commander Fussell back there representing the Police Department and Assistant Chief Fire Chief Hurley with the Fire District. Welcome. I call upon Commander Fussell to come down and please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I request a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Langdon to approve the agenda as presented and that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. And that passes five to zero. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Thank you, and we do not have many in house. Consent agenda, has anything been pulled from the consent agenda, City Manager?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I'll request a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Luke to accept the consent agenda as presented, and that was seconded by Vice Mayor Langdon. Anything to that, Commissioners?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Please vote. And that passes five to zero. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. It's 4:02 and I adjourn this meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 26, 2022. It's 4:00 PM and we are in the city chambers and I call the Road and Drainage District governing body meeting to order. Everybody's still present from the last meeting and we have done the pledge. I will request a motion for the agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Luke to approve the agenda as presented and that was seconded by Commissioner McDowell. And that passes five to zero. City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this one?
Yeah.
Thank you. Consent agenda, I request a motion. Our City Manager, has anything been pulled from the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you, I'll request a motion.
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor to approve the items in the consent agenda as presented. That was made by Commissioner Luke and seconded by Vice Mayor Langdon. Anything to that, Commissioners?
No, sir.
And that passes five to zero. Okay, public hearing, resolution number 2022-r-15. City Clerk, can you read by title only?
Resolution number 2022-r-15, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida as the governing body of the Road and Drainage District, authorizing the purchase of real property located on Wideman Avenue and described as Lot 51, Block 515, 11th addition to Port Charlotte subdivision, Sarasota County, property appraiser, parcel identification number 0966051551, incorporating recitals, providing for filing of documents, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this item is for the city to purchase property that we need. We do have staff here to help answer any questions you may have in your decision making.
Thank you, sir. Any Commissioner questions? Not seeing any names. Okay, Commissioner McDowell?
Yes, I am, I'm wondering if you could bring up the appraisal report that was done by Ms. Arlena and go to page eight of it. The only reason why I'm asking is it's a visual for my fellow Commissioners and help be able to answer the questions that I have. Thank you. Sorry, thought this would be easy. Apologize.
The picture that I see on page eight is a canal. Is that what I'm going to be looking at?
It's a canal, but it also has parcels around the canal. It shows the individual parcels and then the canal is like right in the middle. It shows the Wideman Street and it shows Southford Boulevard.
Is it labeled location map under subject maps?
What is it that you're looking at?
Mr. Speaks is on his.
Because I am in the appraisal report.
So am I.
And I'm just going, it says here eight of 73.
I have, I have 86 pages.
Sure. In the appraisal report is a map that shows the surrounding parcels and the surrounding streets. And looking at my agenda, it is in the, gosh.
I think it's location map on page 10. Is there a way to get that up there? That's not.
Trying to bring it up. Maybe it'll be easier if I just share it with you and somehow.
Is that the one running in there?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Property information report. I think that's the one. I don't know how it disappeared when I had it up. All of a sudden it like blanked out. The thing, the meeting wasn't yesterday when we had all those technology issues around the city. It's the information, property information report that was produced by Ms. Arlena and according to the document I'm looking at, it's on page eight. Would you like, like it? I don't know if you can bring it up from mine, if you can lay it down?
I have page 12 of 86. I think it's the one.
Property information report.
Aerial view.
Is it an aerial view?
Yeah.
Could be, but it. The property outlined in purple?
Yes.
You guys are looking at the appraisal report. It's a different document in the backup called the property information report.
Can this get laid down on the?
Okay.
I don't know if you can.
It's a diagram of the parcels.
I mean, we can try it down there if you'd like. Just don't touch anything on the screen. It'll disappear again.
I believe what you're saying, City Attorney, is correct. We went into the appraisal instead of the other one.
There, it's got to move it over just a little bit. There you go, perfect. All right. So the property that we're purchasing is number 51 on here. It's highlighted in yellow. But if you, if you go down into the lower corner where it says Tract A, that is the City of Northport property. You see, go like diagonally to the south, it says Tract A.
C-Track B.
C-Track B. Yes, the other side, the other side of the street.
Right. Yeah. City of Northport owns Tract A. And I'm curious because the, the weir is more closer to Southford than it is to the actual property that's highlighted. It's kind of like if you, and I'm wondering why are we, why can't we use Tract A for staging and repairs? Because there's a lot of space between the canal and that home. And there's two homes that are next to this property that we're looking to purchase. Oh, great. Typical.
Hey, low battery.
Typical. Yeah, and I'm afraid, oh, it's not going to disappear. Good. So while we're buying 51, in order to get to the canal, I mean, to the weir, you have to go behind 52 and 53 where that little square is, is about where the weir is. Why don't we just use staging area for Tract A, go across the street and you have access? Does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying. Chuck Speaks, Public Works Director, we need access on that side of Southford. We're going to have to bring in the heavy equipment to operate to get to that weir. Understand that we have a 20-foot maintenance easement, say, to the north of that property line on all of those parcels. So we'll have room there to stage our equipment, get it behind those, those properties. But to be on the other side of Southford is going to limit what we can do with the property. Because your Tract A is, we would have to work across Southford. So if I'm bringing in materials, cranes, all of that, we're going to be going back and forth across Southford during construction. We're going to have to take out the guardrails and we're going to have to probably destroy those sidewalks.
I guess I'm failing then to understand the purpose of property, of purchasing the properties. I, from my vantage point, we are trying to purchase properties to gain access. And I understand that this is gaining access. Those big, heavy equipments that you were talking about are going to have to be staged at 51, but they're going to have moved behind 52 and 53, which are houses. We have access. It may not be direct access, just like 51 is not direct access. But there are so many other properties around that don't have any access, any, direct or indirect, nearby. Shouldn't we be concentrating on that because our, our resources, the finances are not finite? I mean, there's only a limited amount of money in the pot.
Sure. And we're trying to address, we have a list of these properties that we are in process of trying to purchase. Some of these people are not going to sell to us. We are reaching out to multiple people at one time. We have a list of maybe 10 the last time we went around. We're addressing the ones that are willing to sell and trying to procure those now. There may be other ones that we would love to have in other places, but those people just aren't willing to sell to us right now. Now they may at another time. Having access on the other side of Southford doesn't do me any good. It does me, it does me no good to work on the weir that's on this side of Southford. I have too much in between that area. Again, I would have to, construction equipment is now going to be crossing Southford back and forth and we'd have to take down all the guardrails, which means then you have to put up temporary barriers because we can't have that canal unprotected for traffic. So logistically, this is the best lot we can get. 52 is not selling to us.
52's got a house going up.
Exactly. So 51 is our best bet. That's our, our last chance to get anything anywhere near this structure.
So if you have to do any maintenance to that weir on the other side of 51, across the canal, how are you going to get there?
We're going to maintain that weir from the north side. We need access at least on one side. I, they have cranes that will reach completely across the Cocoa Pum and the Snowbird. I'm not, I'm not concerned with not being able to reach this side, but I have to have access to that side, the one side or the other.
So when we are purchasing property across from the same weir on one side and the other, why aren't we using those cranes that can get you access?
We can. We can use those cranes to get access, but those may be used for other things. They may be part of our mobility plan or a walkway or a bike path.
I just, I'm seeing $34,000 that could possibly be used in a totally different area that has zero access. And I understand it's going to be difficult and cumbersome to cross over Southford and nobody wants to truly do that. But the money for other areas, to me, seems more important to get those properties. But thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate the conversation.
Commissioner White?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I live here, so I know this, this track really well. And it's, it's already used as an unofficial staging area that, I mean, whenever Comcast was working in the area, they're, they're there. And also, it has to be noted, there are go-for tortoises in that, in that lot, the Tract A. But I, I do agree with Mr. Speaks, you know, analogy of this, that to cross over there, it's really confined. You have all that, what is that called? Rickrack, the rocks there. I mean, I just think it would be very cumbersome to be moving across the street from there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Luke?
Yeah, it makes sense to me that you'd have to have staging areas on, on both sides. But I actually like purchasing the lots for maintenance because those lots are them lots. They're not going to be developed on, they're going to be used for maintenance, so I like it for that reason, too. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I see no other questions. City Clerk, is there a public comment?
There's not.
I'll request a motion.
I move to approve, go ahead. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Oh, thank you. I move to approve resolution number 2022-r-15 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Langdon to approve resolution number 2022-r-15 as presented and that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that, Commissioners?
No, sir.
And that passes four to one with Commissioner McDowell dissenting. Commissioner McDowell?
I completely agree we need to be purchasing lots to get access. But when you have access a block, a lot away, that's why I had to, I think the money could be used for other purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, is there any public comment? Already then, it's 4:18 and I adjourn this meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 26, 2022. It's 4:00 PM. We are in the city chambers and I call the solid waste district governing body meeting to order. Everybody's still here, we have done the pledge. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as presented by Commissioner McDowell and seconded by who? By Commissioner Luke. And that passes five to zero. City Clerk, is there any public comment?
No.
Thank you. Consent agenda, City Manager, has anybody pulled anything from the consent?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor. I move to approve the items in the consent agenda as is.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Langdon to approve the consent agenda as presented and that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. And that passes five to zero. Public hearing, resolution number 2022-r-23. City Clerk, can you read by title only?
Resolution number 2022-r-23, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida as the governing body of the solid waste district, authorizing the purchase of real property located on Silverleaf Road, described as Lot 25, 3,276, 47th addition to Port Charlotte subdivision, Sarasota County, property appraiser, parcel identification number 1128227625, incorporating recitals, providing for filing of documents, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager, this is your item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Department of Public Works is seeking to secure land ownership of this future site for the solid waste transfer station to be located on Silverleaf Road. We are asking for you to allow us to purchase this property with the appraised value of $12,070. We do have city staff who are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any Commissioner questions? Not seeing any at this point. City Clerk, is there any public comment?
There's not.
All right, I'm going to close this public hearing and request a motion, please.
Make a motion, Mayor, to approve resolution number 2022-r-23 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell to approve resolution number 2022-r-23 as presented and that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that, Commissioners?
No, sir.
And that passes five to zero. Any public comments sneak in at the end here?
There's none.
All right, thank you. It's 4:22. I adjourn this meeting. See y'all.
This is George, your City Arborist for the City of Northport. Today, we're going to discuss the tree permit. I get a lot of calls about the tree permit. A lot of people are confused on how to fill it out. So I'm just going to do a quick overview of the tree permit. People ask me, why do we need a tree permit? We are 21 years in a row tree city. We try to maintain our tree canopy. We have a 35% canopy requirement that is in the ULDC code. Tree permit is $18.75. If you're caught cutting down a tree and do not obtain a permit, you will be fined $250. The tree permit is good for a year. At the top left-hand corner of the permit, there's an, it says inspections. There's a phone number. Please call that number. It's an automated system that will set up a final inspection for the inspector to come out and close out the permit. Please have the permit posted somewhere when the tree work is being done and at the final inspection. If the paperwork is not where the inspector can find it, they will fail the inspection. You can drop off your permit at City Hall while it must be dropped off. You can email it in. There's a drop box for small permits or the drive-through window. Okay, this has been another video of Ask the Arborist. If you have any questions, please visit the city website at cityofnorthport.com.
If you're happy and you know it, clap your wings. If you're happy and you know it, you really ought to show it. If you're happy and you know it, clap your wings.
Motion, Mary Union, Y93.
When you're following behind large trucks, you want to make sure that you're following at a safe distance. And if you don't know that safe distance, just remember if they, if you can't see their mirrors, they can't see you.
We stop at about 1,000 houses a day. In order for us to complete that, you know, and, and be safe, you know, we try not to rush in between the houses. It takes us a little time. We're not trying to slow you down. We're just trying to get things up in an orderly fashion. How our trucks work, we have two different types of trucks that pick up residential garbage and recycle. We have one that's a side loader and we have one that's a front loader. When that bucket comes out of the top of the truck and is positioned to pick up cans up front, you have probably eight, nine feet in front of you that the people behind you passing may not know about.
On a large truck, construction vehicles, et cetera, there's a lot of flashing lights. So just make sure their brake lights, you know, you're paying attention to their brake lights and their blinkers so you know what they're intending to do. So you want to make sure that you're not on a double yellow line or a curve and you have good visibility for oncoming traffic so you can pass safely.
If you're too close and you go to pass, you never know what's around the corner.
When coming up to an intersection behind a large vehicle, realize that you can't pass within 100 foot of an intersection. Go through that intersection safely, following at a safe distance, and then once your lines allow you to pass, do so safely when there's not oncoming traffic.
Safety first. Don't risk your life to get somewhere sooner. All right? You're going to hurt yourself or somebody else. Let's just keep it safe.
Hello, I'm David and today we're doing another episode of Ask the Arborists. We've had a lot of questions come in about gopher tortoises in the City of Northport. We certainly have a lot of them. And today we're going to answer some of those questions that have been coming in. The first one is what happens when there's a gopher tortoise on a vacant lot and a builder puts in a land clearing permit and wants to build or develop that lot? Well, when they submit a land clearing permit, myself or George Murphy, the other arborist, we go out to the land and we walk the lot for gopher tortoise burrows. This is what they look like. The gopher tortoise is a keystone species and up to 300 different, 350 different animals depend on this burrow. So the state or the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission has protected the animal and its burrows. So we do our very best to make sure that these do not get disturbed. By doing so, we walk vacant lots when land clear permits get issued to ensure that there are not any burrows. If there are burrows or gopher tortoises on that lot, we do not issue a land clear permit. What we do instead is contact the builder and let them know that they have to hire an authorized gopher tortoise agent who is certified through the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to relocate the tortoise that may or may not be inside that burrow. This process is a permitted process through the state or Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and we won't issue the permit until we've got permission from the state that that burrow has been excavated and that tortoise has been relocated. So another question we had is what, where do the tortoises go once they've been relocated? The tortoises go to a permanent conservation land, which is deemed a recipient site for tortoises. It's a very happy place for them to go and they can live out their days. Tortoises live up to 60 years, so we want to protect them and continue their species on for further generations. Morning, Northport. My name's David Jarrow. I'm the City Arborist. Today I'm going to show you how to measure a tree's diameter and rest height, or DVH. We begin by measuring from the ground up at 54 inches or four and a half feet. So for me, that's right at my chest plate. So I can usually just walk up to a tree and put it right up. So today I'm using arbor tape. I'll show you two different ways. One with arbor tape that converts circumference to diameter, and then I'll also show you with a regular tape measure. And in this case, this tree is 21 inches diameter. Now, the other method of doing this, which is probably more for typical homeowners, is everyone's got a tape measure in their garage. I got 67 inches circumference. So now we just have to convert that to diameter. To do that, you're going to want to pull out a calculator, take the circumference and divide by pi, which is 3.14. I got 67 divided by 3.14, and I got 21 inches.
Hi, I'm Josh Taylor. I'm the Public Information Officer, Communications Manager for the City of Northport, and we're joined now by our Emergency Manager, Mike Ryan.
Thank you very much. It's a Privilege.
Information Officer, Communications Manager for the City of Northport, and we're joined now by our Emergency Manager, Mike Ryan.
Thank you very much. It's a privilege to be here and I'm looking forward to another, hopefully not as exciting hurricane season.
Mike is somewhat new to the city. How long have you been here?
Been here since the end of February. So this will be my first hurricane season with the City of Northport, but come down from Hillsborough County where I spent the last eight years. So hurricanes are, are not an unfamiliar occurrence.
Lots of, lots of experience, for sure. But we're going to try and make this as succinct and as valuable for folks as possible.
Absolutely.
Not quick, but you know, bang for our buck here.
Absolutely.
So what, what is the city currently doing to prepare for hurricane season?
Much like individuals, we are going through our preparedness checklist. Basically, what that means is we're making sure that all our supplies are in place, all of our personnel, all our staff are ready in case they need to come back to work. They have their plans in place for what they need to bring, what they need for their families. We're testing our power equipment to make sure everything is up and running, performing as it should, making sure that we have enough supplies on hand such as fuel and that everybody's going through the proper training. Everybody's understanding what roles they need to play during a disaster and after the disaster. So we're doing everything that a family and individual would do to prepare, just like anybody else, to be ready for the worst-case scenario.
So I think it's important that the community knows that we're getting ready. I'm confident that we'll be ready.
Absolutely, we will be ready.
Yeah. What, so that's kind of our role.
Yes.
What do individuals need to be doing out there?
What they're looking for from an individual viewpoint is be prepared to be self-sustaining. The general rule has always been for 72 hours. We'd like to push it out, especially with the, the occurrence of Michael and such as the larger storms, to be prepared for four or five days. You're looking at making sure you have enough food to carry you yourself and your family for four or five days. A gallon per water, a gallon of water per person per day is always a good thing. Have your medications with you. You want to stay in touch, so you want to have a battery-powered radio so you can send communications, making sure that you understand what's going on, if there's anything action you need to take so that if you do lose power, you can maintain communications. Flashlights for when it gets dark. If you have children, bring games. And for yourself, bring something to read because it might be a while.
Yeah, and I think we've, we've noticed more recently with COVID that people start hoarding some supplies. That can certainly happen. So now is a good time to get some of this stuff together.
Now is a good time to go out and get what you need. Now's a good time to do the planning because you don't want to plan in the middle of a crisis because eventually you're going to forget something, you don't have a checklist to go by. So do it now when there's no stress and you go out and take your time and get what you need. You don't have to get everything all at once. So you can kind of separate out the items that you need to get over a period of time. So it's a good thing to start doing it now.
We know that there'll be a tax day coming up, some breaks there too.
Absolutely, so take, take advantage of those.
Tax week, maybe it's a whole week.
A whole week. And it's one of the things that you really take advantage of, get some really a whole lot of good materials for a very, very good price.
So what, for maybe, you know, we have a lot of new residents constantly here in Northport. What can all residents expect leading up to, if a storm is threatening our area, what will that, I know they're all different, but what will that kind of be like?
Basically, what you're going to see is, of course, watching your local newscast, your favorite newscast, your weather person, they're going to kind of lay out what's going to happen in broad, general terms, kind of give you an idea of what to expect in terms of the storm intensity, in terms of timing, et cetera, et cetera. From the city's viewpoint, what we're going to do is provide additional information, some detailed information. If we're opening evacuation centers, where are those going to be located? We're going to close down any government operations, you know, when is that going to occur? We'll provide you information for non-emergency information. If you want to report a tree down or something going on in your neighborhood, it's not an emergency, but you want to call it in so it can be addressed, we'll provide you with numbers for that. So we'll keep you informed on the details of what's going on, but also let you know what's going to happen, what you, what you can expect.
Yeah, and I, we're in a much different world these days. The city, not necessarily as reliant on other third parties to get that information out. You know, all of our social media, all of these channels, you know, very powerful tools, our city app, the North Report, you can download that in your app store. It's a great way we can send push notifications. We also have the emergency alert Sarasota County.
Yes.
So I mean, there's, there's plenty of, you just need to get connected a little bit.
Yes, and one of the things that we always tell our residents is to, a lot of times, there's going to be a period of time where we may not have any communications for an extended period of time. It may happen. This is why it's always good to let others know what your plan is. If you have a plan, share it. Let them know where you're going to be, what you plan on doing, so at least they have some ideas. So there's not a frantic call. They know you're safe, they know you're okay, you told them ahead of time what you're going to be doing, what they can expect, especially if they lose communications, where you're going to be. So again, planning out ahead of time and letting them know, if you do lose communications, this is what we're going to be doing at that time.
That's a good tip. Evacuation centers.
Ah, yes.
What, what is that going to be like?
Evacuation centers are not someplace that you would make reservations for. In other words, it's going to be very austere, it's going to be very basic. It is, just like the term sounds, it's an evacuation center. This is where we bring people in to get them out of harm's way. That's the sole purpose. It's going to be very austere, very bare bones. There's going to be sheltering and protection from the elements, basic food, water, but not much more than that.
Yeah, so you need to bring some of those items. Don't just show up and...
Don't, don't show up and, you know, don't plan on making dinner reservations. You're not going to be served anything, and so whatever you could bring with you, just like your emergency kit, bring that with you.
And it's important, Sarasota County operates those for us.
Yes.
A lot of those locations are here in Northport because we're away from the coast.
Correct, yes.
And most of them have now, if not all of them, have become pet-friendly. And that's a big deal for folks.
Absolutely. And for our family, our pets are our family. We treat them just like any other member of the family. We make sure we have their papers, make sure we have their food, and make sure we have a place for them to stay because they're going to be separate. They're not going to be with the families within the shelter themselves. They're going to be put in another safe area. Just because within the shelter itself, you might have people who might have outies, two pets. So we want to keep them safe, but be prepared to take care of them, be prepared to go take a look on them every now and then, but be prepared with them just like you would any other member of the family.
And in years past, it used to be only certain ones were pet-friendly, but now pretty much, and they knew that that was keeping people from going, getting out of harm's way.
Yes, and we understand that, like I said, pets are a very, very important part, and so we want to make sure that we're accommodating them as well.
As far as COVID's changed a lot of things in our lives, I can imagine in an evacuation center, it's, you know, how do you, how do you, how do you balance that?
Yeah, one of the things that we've had to do over the last year is kind of provide more spacing between groups. In other words, you come into the family, you're kind of generally located with your family, but you'll be a little bit more distance separated from other families. The difference is a lot of times now, there's not a lot of mingling. In other words, you don't see people walking around, talking to each other, and they kind of stay within their groups just to maintain that social distancing, just to make sure that everybody's safe, staying healthy, but they're out of harm's way. But again, it's a little bit more limited in terms of the actual social interaction.
Lots of options for shelters here in Northport. How do, how do people know where to go?
Basically, what we will do is we will let you know what shelters are open. And as you stated before, we have several options. However, when a storm comes along, that doesn't necessarily mean that all the shelters are open. We will let our residents know what shelters are open, when they are going to open, and when they can report to those shelters. So pay very, very close attention to the shelters that are going to be open because even though we have shelters available, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're all open for every storm.
And again, we'll have a lot of that information. What we've done in Northport is anytime there's an event, whether it's COVID or a storm, we, we have our alerts page.
Yes.
It's a button that's on our city app, North Report, I'm going to keep plugging that. Or if you just go to cityofnorthport.com forward slash alerts, we'll have all the latest info. We're sitting there 24/7, you know, when these types of events happen, to make sure that that's all in one spot, everybody can find it every time, it's not some new website.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great resource. It's updated real time, so you get the latest information that you need to know.
A lot of people want to know, storm happens, I'm in a shelter, how, when can I leave?
A lot of times, you're, of course, you're not being held within the shelter, but what we'll do is we'll advise you, or the shelter staff, will let you know when it's safe to go back outside. Just because a storm has passed does not necessarily mean that it's safe to venture outdoors, depending on how much damage the storm has done to the area. A lot of times what we'll do, we'll have crews in the area, kind of, if there's unsafe areas, we'll let you know what those are, like it might have power downs or roads blocked or flooding. But we will let you know, let the residents... But we will let you know, let the residents of the shelter, evacuation center know when it's safe to go back out and venture back to their homes or in their general area.
And we, I'm sure that we've made this mistake already a couple of times in this interview because it's just old habits, shelter, center, center, shelter. Why, it was a change that was made maybe two years ago. Why?
Basically, what, it's actually more literal in terms of terminology, the evacuation center is literally that. An evacuation center, it's only supposed to be open for one, two, maybe three days, and then go back to its original purpose, as compared to a shelter which is more long-term for those individuals who cannot return home, maybe to damage or whatever the case may be. Sheltering is more of a long-term, evacuation center is short-term.
Yeah, so we apologize for just old habits, years and years of reporting and working in government, I mean, it's just, it's hard to get over, but we're doing the best we can. Unfortunately, a storm hits our area, you know, various ranges of damage. What can we expect here in Northport?
What we're going to do is we have teams ready. As soon as the storm passes, we have teams strategically located throughout the city that as soon as the storm passes, they go out into the community, they start looking, what we call a damage assessment. They start going out through the different neighborhoods, going down the major roadways, the secondary roadways, they start seeing where the damage has occurred, how much damage has occurred, what type of actions will we need to take in terms of how long, if there's a power outage, how long do we think it's going to be? Just kind of getting a big picture of what's going on and making sure that when we relay that information to our community, that we're giving the most accurate information at that time to let them know what areas they can go into, what areas they should stay away from. But we're going to try to make it as safe as possible so that our community can get back to their homes.
And probably the most difficult part with that, we've been fortunate with many storms that we haven't completely lost communication, but it's certainly possible. Cell towers down, internet's out, no power. How would we get the message out? What do you envision there?
A lot of times, it's going to be a mix of whatever's working at that time. Sometimes you might have a social media platform there, or sometimes very barely a cell, sometimes a text. There's always a weather radio that we can do in terms of getting notifications out through the weather service itself, they kind of help us out. There's different ways to try to access different communication types, it's just a matter of what's available for us internally. A lot of times, we'll use a ham radio for when all other communications are gone, we're able to communicate amongst ourselves, and then if need be, do face-to-face communications and let them know, do the old-fashioned way.
Yeah, we might even have to go to neighborhoods to post information.
Yes.
Or create a place where people can come physically, get more info.
Absolutely.
And I know in some recent storms, you know, cell phone companies have been able to bring in some mobile units. Some more successful than others in that realm.
Yes, yes, and they're called cows, for lack of a better term, that's what they use, but they will bring them in. We've had pretty good success when they're able to get, but it's also depend on where the storm is, how big it is, how much damage it's done, and how much geographical area it has covered, and our accessibility to those, to those units to bring them in.
So cow, I'm going to put you on the spot here, cell...
Communications on wheels.
I didn't even, I didn't even have the first letter right. Okay, great. And I mean, some good news is, is that Northport, we have our own emergency manager, we have our own operation center that we'll kind of man in here in City Hall.
Yes.
But we're not alone. How does our relationship work with other nearby agencies?
We work very, very well, especially with the county. We have constant communications between the county emergency operations center, our emergency operations center, and also municipalities also have their emergency operations centers. We're a constant contact before, during, and after the event. What we do is, we all like to be on the same page. We all like to know what kind of experiences are going on in other areas outside of us that may impact us, and we also let them know what's going on here that may impact them. We share resources constantly, whether, you know, it's before the storm or after the storm, constantly communicating, providing equipment and supplies, materials, and personnel to whatever the case may be, understanding that no single jurisdiction can handle this all by themselves. So we have a really good working relationship amongst the cities, amongst the county, and we're constantly sharing information and resources and making sure that we're able to address all of our community needs, no matter where they are.
And I think what's, you know, that's the beauty of being in a municipality and a city, is that you can get some more of this individualized treatment. We have experts who know the, you know, when the Maiaca hatchet gets to a certain level, when we need to start being concerned, what we can do, lower, raise the levees, do some of those things. I mean, I think Northport is in some very good hands when it comes to this.
We're very, very fortunate to have some very, very skilled staff that know their job extremely well and know, have a history and understand that when you start to see things, they can take proactive. They like to stay ahead of the event. Instead of reacting to the event, they stay a step ahead of the event. So they're in a proactive posture all the time, which is really a big, great benefit for the community itself.
Overall, just a reminder to, we're getting ready, you get ready, be safe.
Absolutely, be prepared, stay safe, and stay communicating with everybody to let them know what you're going to do, where you're going to be, and how you're going to handle it, and we'll be ready.
Expected to be another pretty active season.
Probably going to be, yes.
It only takes one.
Yes, only one, yes.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for tuning in, and get ready.
We invite everyone who goes to see the mural to go home and create a sidewalk chalk mural of your own. Get out that chalk and enjoy coloring our community with the images of healthy child development.
It's a great message. That's the number one thing is that that's what people always keep remarking is it is so upbeat and it's, you know, it's easy to just feel the well-being and the joy, which is what, you know, they want to bring to everybody. I'm just really happy it's turned out really well.
Go Northport!
Hello, everyone. I'm Josh Taylor with the city of Northport, and we want to tell you about some big improvements to our North Report app. It's a great tool to get a lot of information from the city, but also a great tool to give some. For instance, we're right here. We have this tree that's overhanging the roadway here, blocking this street sign. If you have our app, alls you have to do is take a quick picture. It'll map it for us and send it right to the right person who will fix it. So we're going to report an issue. Look for the type of incident that it is. Pre-vegetation, road obstruction. Take the photo. You can see that the tree is right in front of that sign. Click on it. Use the photo. Put a little note. Tree in front of sign. You can post anonymously or as yourself. Submit. Complete. That's simple. Goes right to all the right people. You don't have to call, figure out who you need to deal with. And then there's a list. You can come back and check. Everybody else can see that it's been submitted, so they know that their neighbors already done it. It goes right to them.
Oh my gosh, this is gonna be great!
This is George, your city arborist for the city of Northport. Today, we're going to discuss the tree permit. I get a lot of calls about the tree permit. A lot of people are confused on how to fill it out, so I'm just going to do a quick overview of the tree permit. People ask me, why do we need a tree permit? We are 21 years in a row tree city. We try to maintain our tree canopy. We have a 35% canopy requirement that is in the ULDC code. Tree permit is $18.75. If you're caught cutting down a tree and do not obtain a permit, you will be fined $250. The tree permit is good for a year. At the top left-hand corner of the permit, there's an, it says inspections. There's a phone number. Please call that number. It's an automated system that will set up a final inspection for the inspector to come out and close out the permit. Please have the permit posted somewhere when the tree work is being done and at the final inspection. If the paperwork is not where the inspector can find it, they will fail the inspection. You can drop off your permit at City Hall while it must be dropped off. You can email it in. There's a drop box for small permits or the drive-through window. Okay, this has been another video of Ask the Arborist. If you have any questions, please visit the city website at cityofnorthport.com.
When you're following behind large trucks, you want to make sure that you're following at a safe distance. And if you don't know that safe distance, just remember if they, if you can't see their mirrors, they can't see you.
We stop at about 1,000 houses a day. In order for us to complete that, you know, and be safe, you know, we try not to rush in between the houses. It takes us a little time. We're not trying to slow you down. We're just trying to get things up in an orderly fashion. How our trucks work, we have two different types of trucks that pick up residential garbage and recycle. We have one that's a side loader and we have one that's a front loader. When that bucket comes out of the top of the truck and is positioned to pick up cans up front, you have probably eight, nine feet in front of you that the people behind you passing may not know about.
On a large truck, construction vehicles, et cetera, there's a lot of flashing lights. So just make sure their brake lights, you know, you're paying attention to their brake lights and their blinkers, so you know what they're intending to do. So you want to make sure that you're not on a double yellow line or a curve, and you have good visibility for oncoming traffic, so you can pass safely.
If you're too close and you go to pass, you never know what's around the corner.
When coming up to an intersection behind a large vehicle, realize that you can't pass within 100 foot of an intersection. Go through that intersection safely, following at a safe distance, and then once your lines allow you to pass, do so safely when there's not oncoming traffic.
Safety first. Don't risk your life to get somewhere sooner. All right? You're going to hurt yourself or somebody else. Let's just keep it safe.
Hello, I'm David, and today we're doing another episode of Ask the Arborist. We've had a lot of questions come in about gopher tortoises in the city of Northport. We certainly have a lot of them, and today we're going to answer some of those questions that have been coming in. The first one is, what happens when there's a gopher tortoise on a vacant lot and a builder puts in a land clearing permit and wants to build or develop that lot? Well, when they submit a land clearing permit, myself or George Murphy, the other arborist, we go out to the land and we walk the lot for gopher tortoise burrows. This is what they look like. The gopher tortoise is a keystone species, and up to 350 different animals depend on this burrow. So the state or the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission has protected the animal and its burrows. So we do our very best to make sure that these do not get disturbed. By doing so, we walk vacant lots when land clear permits get issued to ensure that there are not any burrows. If there are burrows or gopher tortoises on that lot, we do not issue a land clear permit. What we do instead is contact the builder and let them know that they have to hire an authorized gopher tortoise agent who is certified through the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to relocate the tortoise that may or may not be inside that burrow. This process is a permitted process through the state or Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and we won't issue the permit until we've got permission from the state that that burrow has been excavated and that tortoise has been relocated. So another question we had is, what, where do the tortoises go once they've been relocated? The tortoises go to a permanent conservation land, which is deemed a recipient site for tortoises. It's a very happy place for them to go, and they can live out their days. Tortoises live up to 60 years, so we want to protect them and continue their species on for further generations. Morning, Northport. My name's David Jero. I'm the city arborist. Today, I'm going to show you how to measure a tree's diameter and breadth or DBH. So you begin by measuring from the ground up at 54 inches or four and a half feet. So for me, that's right at my chest plate. So I can usually just walk up to a tree and put it right up. So today, I'm using Arbor Tape. I'll show you two different ways. One with Arbor Tape that converts circumference to diameter, and then I'll also show you with a regular tape measure. And in this case, this tree is 21 inches diameter. Now, the other method of doing this, which is probably more for typical homeowners, is everyone's got a tape measure in their garage. I got 67 inches circumference. So now, we just have to convert that to diameter. To do that, you're going to want to pull out a calculator, take the circumference and divide by pi, which is 3.14. I got 67 divided by 3.14, and I got 21 inches.
Hi, I'm Josh Taylor. I'm the Public Information Officer, Communications Manager for the city of Northport, and we're joined now by our Emergency Manager, Mike Ryan.
Thank you very much. It's a privilege to be here, and I'm looking forward to another, hopefully not as exciting hurricane season.
Mike is somewhat new to the city. How long have you been here?
Been here since the end of February, so this will be my first hurricane season with the city of Northport, but come down from Hillsborough County, where I spent the last eight years. So hurricanes are not an unfamiliar occurrence.
Lots of, lots of experience, for sure.
Yes.
But we're going to try and make this as succinct and as valuable for folks as possible.
Absolutely.
Not quick, but you know, bang for our buck here.
Absolutely.
So what is the city currently doing to prepare for hurricane season?
Much like individuals, we are going through our preparedness checklist. Basically, what that means is we're making sure that all our supplies are in place, all of our personnel, all of our staff are ready in case they need to come back to work. They have their plans in place for what they need to bring, what they need for their families. We're testing our power equipment to make sure everything is up and running, performing as it should, making sure that we have enough supplies on hand, such as fuel, and that everybody's going through the proper training. Everybody's understanding what roles they need to play during a disaster and after the disaster. So we're doing everything that a family and individual would do to prepare, just like anybody else, to be ready for the worst-case scenario.
So I think it's important that the community knows that we're getting ready. I'm confident that we'll be ready.
Absolutely, we will be ready.
Yeah. What, so that's kind of our role.
Yes.
What do individuals need to be doing out there?
What they're looking for from an individual viewpoint is be prepared to be self-sustaining. The general rule has always been for 72 hours. We'd like to push it out, especially with the occurrence of Michael and such as the larger storms, to be prepared for four or five days. You're looking at making sure you have enough food to carry you yourself and your family for four or five days. A gallon per water, a gallon of water per person per day is always a good thing. Have your medications with you. You want to stay in touch, so you want to have a battery-powered radio, so you can send communications, making sure that you understand what's going on, if there's anything action you need to take, so that if you do lose power, you can maintain communications. Flashlights for when it gets dark. If you have children, bring games. And for yourself, bring something to read, because it might be a while.
Yeah, and I think we've noticed more recently with COVID that people start hoarding some supplies.
Yes.
That can certainly happen.
Yes.
So now is a good time to get some of this stuff together.
Now is a good time to go out and get what you need. Now's a good time to do the planning, because you don't want to plan in the middle of a crisis, because eventually you're going to forget something, you don't have a checklist to go by. So do it now, when there's no stress, and you can go out and take your time and get what you need. You don't have to get everything all at once, so you can kind of separate out the items that you need to get over a period of time. So it's a good thing to start doing it now.
We know that there'll be a tax day coming up, some breaks there, too.
Absolutely, so take advantage of those.
Tax week, maybe it's a whole week.
A whole week.
Yeah.
And it's one of the things that you really want to take advantage of, get some really a whole lot of good materials for a very, very good price.
So what, for maybe, you know, we have a lot of new residents constantly here in Northport. What can all residents expect leading up to, if a storm is threatening our area, what will that, I know they're all different.
Sure.
But what will that kind of be like?
Basically, what you're going to see is, of course, watching your local newscast, your favorite newscast, your weather person, they're going to kind of lay out what's going to happen in broad, general terms, kind of give you an idea of what to expect in terms of the storm intensity, in terms of timing, et cetera, et cetera. From the city's viewpoint, what we're going to do is provide additional information, some detailed information, if we're opening evacuation centers, where are those going to be located? We're going to close down any government operations, you know, when is that going to occur? We'll provide you information for non-emergency information. If you want to report a tree down or something going on in your neighborhood, it's not an emergency, but you want to call it in so it can be addressed, we'll provide you with numbers for that. So we'll keep you informed on the details of what's going on, but also let you know what's going to happen, what you can expect.
Yeah, and I, we're in a much different world these days. The city, not necessarily as reliant on other third parties to get that information out. You know, all of our social media, all of these channels, you know, very powerful tools, our city app, the North Report, you can download that in your app store. It's a great way we can send push notifications. We also have the emergency alert service.
Sarasota County, yes.
So, I mean, there's plenty of, you just need to get connected a little bit.
Yes, and one of the things that we always tell our residents is to, a lot of times, there's going to be a period of time where we may not have any communications for an extended period of time. It may happen. This is why it's always good to let others know what your plan is. If you have a plan, share it. Let them know where you're going to be, what you plan on doing, so at least they have some ideas. So there's not a friend to call, they know you're safe, they know you're okay, you told them ahead of time what you're going to be doing, what they can expect, especially if they lose communications, where you're going to be. So again, planning out ahead of time and letting them know, if you do lose communications, this is what we're going to be doing at that time.
That's a good tip. Evacuation centers.
Ah, yes.
What is that going to be like?
Evacuation centers are, that's someplace that you would make reservations for. In other words, it's going to be very austere. It's going to be very basic. It is, just like the term sounds, it's an evacuation center. This is where we bring people in to get them out of harm's way. That's the sole purpose. It's going to be very austere, very bare bones. There's going to be sheltering and protection from the elements, basic food, water, but not much more than that.
Yeah, so you need to bring some of those items.
You need to bring some.
Don't just show up.
Don't show up and, you know, don't plan making dinner reservations. You're not going to be served anything, and so whatever you could bring with you, just like your emergency kit, bring that with you.
And it is important, Sarasota County operates those for us.
Yes.
A lot of those locations are here in Northport, because we're away from the coast.
Correct, yes.
And most of them have now, if not all of them, have become pet-friendly.
Yes.
And that's a big deal for folks.
Absolutely, and for our family, our pets are our family.
Sure.
We treat them just like any other member of the family. We make sure we have their papers, make sure we have their food, make sure we have a place for them to stay, because they're going to be separate. They're not going to be with the families within the shelter themselves. They're going to put in another safe area, just because within the shelter itself, you might have people who might have outies to pet. So we want to keep them safe, but be prepared to take care of them, be prepared to go take a look on them every now and then, but be prepared with them, just like you would any other member of the family.
Yeah, and in years past, it used to be only certain ones were pet-friendly, but now pretty much, and they knew that that was keeping people from going, getting out of harm's way.
Yes, and we understand that, like I said, pets are a very, very important part, and so we want to make sure that we're accommodating them as well.
As far as COVID's changed a lot of things in our lives.
Right.
I can imagine in an evacuation center, you know, how do you, how do you, how do you balance that?
Yeah, one of the things that we've had to do over the last year is kind of provide more spacing between groups. In other words, you come into the family, you're kind of generally located with your family, but you'll be a little bit more distance separated from other families. The difference is, a lot of times now, there's not a lot of mingling. In other words, you don't see people walking around, talking to each other, and they kind of stay within their groups, just to maintain that social distancing, just to make sure that everybody's safe, staying healthy, but they're out of harm's way. But again, it's a little bit more limited in terms of the actual social interaction.
Lots of options for shelters here in Northport. How do people know where to go?
Basically, what we will do is we will let you know what shelters are open. And as you stated before, we have several options. However, when a storm comes along, that doesn't necessarily mean that all the shelters are open. We will let our residents know what shelters are open, when they are going to open, and when they can report to those shelters. So pay very, very close attention to the shelters that are going to be open, because even though we have shelters available, doesn't necessarily mean that they're all open for every storm.
And again, we'll have a lot of that information. What we've done in Northport is anytime there's an event, whether it's COVID or a storm, we have our alerts page.
Yes.
It's a button that's on our city app, North Report, I'm going to keep plugging that. Or if you just go to cityofnorthport.com/alerts, we'll have all the latest info. We're sitting there 24/7, you know, when these types of events happen, to make sure that that's all in one spot, everybody can find it every time, it's not some new website.
Yeah, it's a great resource. It's updated real time, so you get the latest information that you need to know.
A lot of people want to know, storm happens, I'm in a shelter, how, when can I leave?
A lot of times, you're pushing not being held within the shelter. A lot of times, of course, you're not being held within the shelter. But what we'll do is we'll advise you, or the shelter staff, will let you know when it's safe to go back outside. Just because the storm has passed does not necessarily mean that it's safe to venture outdoors. Depending on how much damage the storm has done to the area. A lot of times what we'll do, we'll have crews in the area. Kind of, if there's unsafe areas, we'll let you know what those are. Like it might have power downs or roadblocks or flooding. But we will let you know, let the residents of the shelter evacuation center know when it's safe to go back out and venture back to their homes or in their general area.
And we, I'm sure that we've made this mistake already a couple of times in this interview because it's just old habits. Shelter, center, center, shelter. Why, it was a change that was made maybe two years ago. Why?
Basically, what, it's actually more literal in terms of terminology. The evacuation center is literally that. An evacuation center. It's only supposed to be open for one, two, maybe three days, and then go back to its original purpose. As compared to a shelter, which is more long-term for those individuals who cannot return home. Maybe to damage or whatever the case may be. Sheltering is more of a long-term. Evacuation center is short-term.
Yeah, so we apologize for just old habits, years and years of reporting and working in government. I mean, it's just, it's hard to get over, but we're doing the best we can. Unfortunately, a storm hits our area. You know, various ranges of damage. What can we expect here in Northport?
What we're going to do is we have teams ready. As soon as the storm passes, we have teams strategically located throughout the city that as soon as the storm passes, they go out into the community and they start looking, what we call a damage assessment. They start going out through the different neighborhoods, going down the major roadways, the secondary roadways. They start seeing where the damage has occurred, how much damage has occurred. What type of actions will we need to take in terms of how long? If there's a power outage, how long do we think it's going to be? Just kind of getting a big picture of what's going on and making sure that when we relay that information to our community, that we're giving the most accurate information at that time. So let them know what areas they can go into, what areas they should stay away from. But we're going to try and make it as safe as possible so that our community can get back to their homes.
And probably the most difficult part with that, we've been fortunate with many storms that we haven't completely lost communication. But it's certainly possible. Cell towers down, internet's out, no power. How would we get the message out? What do you envision there?
A lot of times, it's going to be a mix of whatever's working at that time. Sometimes you might have a social media platform there, or sometimes very barely a cell, sometimes a text. There's always a weather radio that we can do in terms of getting notifications out through the weather service itself. They kind of help us out. There's different ways to try to access different communication types. It's just a matter of what's available for us internally. A lot of times we'll use a ham radio. For when all other communications are gone, we're able to communicate amongst ourselves. And then if need be, do face-to-face communications and let them know, do face the old-fashioned way.
Yeah, we might even have to go to neighborhoods to post information.
Yes.
Or create a place where people can come physically, get more info.
Absolutely.
And I know in some recent storms, you know, cell phone companies have been able to bring in some mobile units.
Yes.
Some more successful than others in that realm.
Yes, yes. And they're called cows, for lack of a better term. That's what they use. But they will bring them in. We've had pretty good success when they're able to get. But it's also depend on, upon where the storm is, how big it is, how much damage it's done, and how much geographical area it has covered, and our accessibility to those, to those units to bring them in.
So cow, I'm going to put you on the spot here. Cell?
Communications on wheels.
I didn't even, I didn't even have the first letter right. Okay, great. And I mean, some good news is, is that Northport, we have our own emergency manager. We have our own operation center that we'll kind of man in here in City Hall.
Yes.
But we're not alone. How does our relationship work with other nearby agencies?
We work very, very well, especially with the county. We have constant communications between the county emergency operation center, our emergency operation center. And also municipalities also have their emergency operation centers. We're a constant contact before, during, and after the event. What we do is we all like to be on the same page. We all like to know what kind of experiences are going on in other areas outside of us that may impact us. And we also let them know what's going on here that may impact them. We share resources constantly, whether, you know, it's before the storm or after the storm. Constantly communicating, providing equipment and supplies, materials, and personnel to whatever the case may be. Understanding that no single jurisdiction can handle this all by themselves. So we have a really good working relationship amongst the cities, amongst the county. And we're constantly sharing information and resources and making sure that we're able to address all of our community needs, no matter where they are.
And I think what's, you know, that's the beauty of being in a municipality and a city, is that you can get some more of this individualized treatment. We have experts who know the, you know, when the Ma'akahachi gets to a certain level, when we need to start being concerned. What we can do, lower, raise the levees, do some of those things. I mean, I think Northport is in some very good hands.
We're very, very fortunate to have some very, very skilled staff that know their job extremely well. And know, have a history and understand that when you start to see things, they can take proactive. They like to stay ahead of the event. Instead of reacting to the event, they stay a step ahead of the event. So they're in a proactive posture all the time, which is really a big, great benefit for the community itself.
Overall, just a reminder to, we're getting ready, you get ready, be safe.
Absolutely. Be prepared, stay safe, and stay communicating with everybody. To let them know what you're going to do, where you're going to be, and how you're going to handle it, and we'll be ready.
Expected to be another pretty active season.
Probably going to be, yes.
It only takes one.
Yes, only one, yes.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate your time. Thanks for tuning in and get ready.
This is the first 1,000 Days mural. I'm a figurative artist. That's what I like to do the most is people. And to me, any age is wonderful to do, but something about a baby. It's about nurturing love for the pregnant woman. For the new infant. And then as the baby grows and develops and the mother's caring for the baby. This is actually closer to three stories.
It's beautiful. It's so joyous. It's so fun. There is so much development that goes on in that period of time that, yes, it's vitally important that we get this out to everybody. Those first 1,000 days sets the lifetime for the child. We have such a young community, so many families within, 12,000 schoolchildren. It's perfect within our community.
Being able to, you know, have everyone come by and see it and everything, it's, you know, it's an honor to be able to do it. And I'm just glad we were chosen. A lot of positives. A lot of people stopping by, really seeing how, how it's coming along. And what a great job the artist has done, more, you know, than what anyone would expect. It just looks awesome.
We hope families will enjoy the mural in Northport. It's vibrant colors and a sense of possibility that inspires. At Gulf Coast, we are so proud to sponsor the mural in Northport and to use the Haddon Memorial Endowment Fund, knowing that it is dedicated to improving the quality of life for residents in Northport.
It literally takes a whole community to raise a baby. It can be tough for families with many resources. The first 1,000 days is working to ensure equal opportunity of support and resources for all young families in our community. Really want to give a big shout out without the foresight of Charles and Marjorie Baransik Foundation. This wouldn't have been possible to launch first 1,000 days. We have had robust support from other philanthropy organizations, including Sarasota Memorial Hospital Foundation, the Gulf Coast Community Foundation, the Selby Foundation, as well as Flanser Trust and many individual donors.
All of the other businesses and organizations donating paint and supplies is just heartwarming.
We invite everyone who goes to see the mural to go home and create a sidewalk chalk mural of your own. Get out that chalk and enjoy coloring our community with the images of healthy child development.
It's a great message. That's the number one thing is that, that's what people always keep remarking, is it is so upbeat. And it's, you know, it's easy to just feel the well-being and the joy, which is what, you know, they want to bring to everybody. I'm just really happy it's turned out really well.
Hello, everyone. I'm Josh Taylor with the City of Northport. And we want to tell you about some big improvements to our North Report app. It's a great tool to get a lot of information from the city, but also a great tool to give some. For instance, we're right here, we have this tree that's overhanging the roadway here, blocking this street sign. If you have our app, alls you have to do is take a quick picture. It'll map it for us and send it right to the right person who will fix it. So we're going to report an issue. Look for the type of incident that it is. Pre-vegetation, road obstruction. Take the photo. You can see that the tree is right in front of that sign. Click on it. Use the photo. Put a little note. Tree in front of sign. You can post anonymously or as yourself. Submit. Complete. That's simple. Goes right to all the right people. You don't have to call, figure out who you need to deal with. And then there's a list. You can come back and check. Everybody else can see that it's been submitted. So they know that their neighbor's already done it. It goes right to them. Oh, guys.
Oh my gosh, this is going to be great.
This is George, your city arborist for the City of Northport. Today, we're going to discuss the tree permit. I get a lot of calls about the tree permit. A lot of people are confused on how to fill it out, so I'm just going to do a quick overview of the tree permit. People ask me, why do we need a tree permit? We are 21 years in a row Tree City. We try to maintain our tree canopy. We have a 35% canopy requirement that is in the ULDC code. Tree permit is $18.75. If you're caught cutting down a tree and do not obtain a permit, you will be fined $250. The tree permit is good for a year. At the top left-hand corner of the permit, there is an, it says inspections. There's a phone number. Please call that number. It's an automated system that will set up a final inspection for the inspector to come out and close out the permit. Please have the permit posted somewhere when the tree work is being done and at the final inspection. If the paperwork is not where the inspector can find it, they will fail the inspection. You can drop off your permit at City Hall. While it must be dropped off, you cannot email it in. There's a drop box for small permits or the drive-through window. Okay, this has been another video of Ask the Arborist. If you have any questions, please visit the city website at cityofnorthport.com.
When you're following behind large trucks, you want to make sure that you're following at a safe distance. And if you don't know that safe distance, just remember if they, if you can't see their mirrors, they can't see you.
We stop at about 1,000 houses a day. In order for us to complete that, you know, and be safe, you know, we try not to rush in between the houses. It takes us a little time. We're not trying to slow you down. We're just trying to get things up in an orderly fashion. How our trucks work, we have two different types of trucks that pick up residential garbage and recycle. We have one that's a side loader and we have one that's a front loader. When that bucket comes out of the top of the truck and is positioned to pick up cans up front, you have probably eight, nine feet in front of you that the people behind you passing may not know about.
On a large truck, construction vehicles, et cetera, there's a lot of flashing lights. So just make sure their brake lights, you know, you're paying attention to their brake lights and their blinkers, so you know what they're intending to do. So you want to make sure that you're not on a double yellow line or a curve and you have good visibility for oncoming traffic, so you can pass safely.
If you're too close and you go to pass, you never know what's around the corner.
When coming up to an intersection behind a large vehicle, realize that you can't pass within 100 foot of an intersection. Go through that intersection safely, following at a safe distance, and then once your lines allow you to pass, do so safely when there's not oncoming traffic.
Safety first. Don't risk your life to get somewhere sooner. All right? You're going to hurt yourself or somebody else. Let's just keep it safe.
Hello, I'm David, and today we're doing another episode of Ask the Arborist. We've had a lot of questions come in about gopher tortoises in the City of Northport. We certainly have a lot of them, and today we're going to answer some of those questions that have been coming in. The first one is, what happens when there's a gopher tortoise on a vacant lot and a builder puts in a land clearing permit and wants to build or develop that lot? Well, when they submit a land clearing permit, myself or George Murphy, the other arborist, we go out to the land and we walk the lot for gopher tortoise burrows. This is what they look like. The gopher tortoise is a keystone species, and up to 350 different animals depend on this burrow. So the state or the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission has protected the animal and its burrows. So we do our very best to make sure that these do not get disturbed. By doing so, we walk vacant lots when land clear permits get issued to ensure that there are not any burrows. If there are burrows or gopher tortoises on that lot, we do not issue a land clear permit. What we do instead is contact the builder and let them know that they have to hire an authorized gopher tortoise agent who is certified through the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to relocate the tortoise that may or may not be inside that burrow. This process is a permitted process through the state or Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and we won't issue the permit until we've got permission from the state that that burrow has been excavated and that tortoise has been relocated. So another question we had is, what, where do the tortoises go once they've been relocated? The tortoises go to a permanent conservation land, which is deemed a recipient site for tortoises. It's a very happy place for them to go and they can live out their days. Tortoises live up to 60 years, so we want to protect them and continue their species on for further generations. Morning, Northport. My name's David Jarrow. I'm the city arborist. Today, I'm going to show you how to measure a tree's diameter and rest height, or DBH. We begin by measuring from the ground up at 54 inches or four and a half feet. So for me, that's right at my chest plate. I can usually just walk up to a tree and put it right up. So today I'm...
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, April 26, 2022. At 6:00 PM, we are in the city chambers, and I call the city commission regular meeting to order. Commissioners present are Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner White, Mayor Emmerich, Vice Mayor Langdon, and Commissioner Luke. We have a quorum present for this meeting. Also present is City Manager Fletcher, City Attorney Slaton, City Clerk Taylor, and Recording Secretary Baker. We have Police Chief Garrison in the back. How you doing, sir? And Assistant Fire Chief Hurley. I'm calling on the Vice Mayor to please lead us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
I have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Luke to approve the agenda as presented, and that was seconded by Commissioner McDowell. Please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. City Clerk, is there any online public comment?
Yes, there is. It's Richard Beaver. My comment is in reference to the upcoming item H-2624 in today's agenda. This item is a time-sensitive matter as we approach our upcoming storm season and should move forward at this point without delay. Due to the diligence from your Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation staff, and management at the Aquatic Center, funds were made available to complete this task before school is out and storm season is upon us. I completely understand that there is already a system such as this in place and operational at the Mullen Center. Unfortunately, this existing system is grossly inadequate in alerting staff at the Aquatic Center. The current alert procedure depends on many variables that can consume precious time as a precursor to an impending storm. The alert must go to the city's network, then be broadcast across the network, then viewed by staff, and then relayed to other staff via radio that there is an alert and to clear the facility. Folks, it's all about time it takes to accomplish this. I saw firsthand as much as an over two-minute delay between a strike close enough to trip the Mullen Center detector and the system go through its cumbersome notification process. This particular day had four busloads of summer campers plus the normal daily park attendees. The staff did an amazing job clearing the facility once they got the warning. With a system in place at the Aquatic Center, the alert with the lights and horns notification is immediate. No questions asked. Also, it would be visible and audible to the soccer fields immediately adjacent to Aquatic Center. My passion is to see this in service for this season. How much is time worth? How much is a life worth? In closing, an additional system should also be considered for warm mineral springs during the facility's rehab for the same reasons. This is just one of the many tools available that should be used for our citizens and patrons' safety. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. That's all.
That's all you have? Thank you. We have some in-house public comment. Ms. Joan Morgan?
Hi, Joan Morgan, Northport. I just want to thank everybody. I want to thank everyone who's going to be, who has been involved in setting up the program that the city is putting on Thursday night at the Morgan Center. God bless you all. God bless everyone on the whole city staff and everyone who's been working on it. It'll save a life, okay? We don't even know whose life it's going to save. We can't thank you enough. I'm sorry it's needed, you know? I'm very sad that it's needed, but it is needed, and we really all have to work together. The village to save a child, and we have to be the village. So thank you. Thank you very much for all the help that everyone's giving for setting up our Victims' Rights Vigil for Friday. We're doing back-to-back here at the Garden of the Five Senses from 5 to 8:30. Again, we're going to be hitting on some of the same topics, but some different ones, and we've got a lot of great speakers coming, and we are doing everything we can, so everyone is certainly invited. Again, I wish we didn't have to have the program. I wish we didn't have to have a tree that has pictures or poems or messages to people. We're providing luminaries that people can design and make out for their loved ones, and we're doing everything we can, and that's all we can do. Thank you, Alice White. Hey, what a weekend we're going to have. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Alice is going to be taking it away, and she is going to be doing her annual tree. And if you haven't been there, oh my gosh, it's just unbelievable, and the work that she's done for People for Trees over the decades and all the people involved in that program. Unbelievable. And then also the dog program that's going to be on at the same time, Kwanis again, what aren't they on top of? And they're certainly helping us with the Victims' Rights Program, too. All of these programs are so great, and it takes a lot of people. It takes a lot of parts to every one of these programs. They don't just automatically happen, and we all know that because you've all done them. Okay? Also want to spend a couple seconds talking about one thing and one thing only, and that is Old World Restaurant. We're about to change an institution, okay? We were there eating today with some of the new food, and it's going to be good, guys. It's still going to be good, but without Christina out there to say hello, and poor Christina now, seeing her in a wheelchair is not what you want to see Christina in. She's really hurting, but hopefully we'll be better soon. 35 years. Thirty-five years. All of us, it depends on how long we've been here, to know how much we appreciate that. If you did not know John Zadner Bellney, if you did not work with John, and if you did work with John, he was a character. You know, he might have been dying of M.D. and cancer. Let me tell you something. You say something he doesn't like, and he knew it, and he knew it immediately. The carnivals, the G. Matthew rallies, all the political rallies, Kwanis Rotary, everything they've done. What an institution for Northport. So, we were certainly blessed to have him, and we will miss him. Again, thank everybody because you're all in this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Vali, Vali Olander, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I am Vali Olander. I came here in peace. I'm not fighting. I'm not a criminal. Would you remove the cop behind me?
No, sir.
I'm not a criminal. Do you have any proof that I am criminal?
You have three minutes, sir. Speak your mind.
This is a public meeting. I wish you guys looked for the dictionary, what a public means. And also, I ask everyone, everyone, to obey the House of Office Charter and governmental charter. My agenda today is, are you commissioners? I mean, is this commission commissioners? A dread stat commission. Dread stat is about the man who is denied equal treatment under the law. Here, you discriminate against me versus city employees. They speak as much as they want. I am not, and I object that. I will ask you again. Next thing, who set the agenda? This is not the duty of manager to set the agenda. This is the charter that I asked you to obey. It's not his duty to set the agenda. You have to answer this to me. If not today, next time. Another thing, ceremonial commissioners. No, commissioners are not the ceremonial. You come to the people to be elected and representing us. There's nothing ceremonial about it. You have a duty to us, not to some city employee. I'd like to speak longer as former commissioners spoke. I copied this from somewhere, I don't know. Slavery wasn't really abolished. Inter-tax, you work hard, and now you get paid. I will take 25% to 50% of your income. Sales tax. So, you want to spend some of the revenue you made? Great. I will charge you an addition of 5% to 10% on what you buy. Proper detaxes, which is unrealized gain. So, you save a portion of your revenue, and you want to buy a house, home, instead of paying rent. I will charge you thousands each year for the privilege even after your home is paid. Capital gains. So, you want to take some of your revenue to invest? Great.
Thank you, sir. I gave you the same amount of time as Ms. Morgan went over. Thank you. Your time is up.
I object.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to finish.
Next up, Mr. Jeffrey Scott, please.
I object to your behavior.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Poor administration between a local government and a local nonprofit can take on many forms. Let me explain. First of all, careful consideration must occur when both parties enter into an agreement. If not, a breach of the public trust could occur. For example, a city commissioner improperly uses or tries to improperly use the power of their elected office for personal gain or for the advantage of others. Another example would be when a city commissioner improperly exercises their official duties in a preferential manner that breaches the public trust and leads to inequity to include the waste of city resources that will likely impact taxpayer dollars. A nonprofit, on the other hand, could influence or tries to influence a city commissioner to use their position in a way that affects the moral high ground of their political office. And again, a member of a local nonprofit could actually engage in improper conduct that could impair the public's confidence in a seated city commissioner's ability to govern in a responsible and ethical manner. In the end, I believe a city commissioner, once compromised, should abstain from voting on any consent agenda item that demonstrates a conflict of interest in the members, with the members of any local nonprofit organization. See Florida Commission on Ethics, Article 2, Section 8. And finally, once a city commissioner has been empowered to play favorites, that city commissioner will continue to undermine their political office and do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to announcements. City Clerk?
The current vacancies for the following boards and committees include the Art Advisory Board, Audit Committee, Charter Review Advisory Board, Citizens Tax Oversight Committee, Community Economic Development Advisory Board, Environmental Advisory Board, Historic and Cultural Advisory Board, Joint Management Advisory Board, Municipal Police Officers Pension Trust Fund Board of Trustees, elected by police officer members, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Public Utility Advisory Board, Veterans Park Advisory Committee, and Zoning Board of Appeals. The upcoming expirations for the following advisory boards and committees. Environmental Advisory Board, Historic and Cultural Advisory Board, and Municipal Police Officer Pension Trust Fund Board of Trustees, commission-appointed. One Northport resident to serve on a Sarasota Manatee Metropolitan Planning Organization's Citizen Advisory Network. If anyone would like more information, please see the City Clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. City Manager, have any of these items been pulled for discussion?
Yes, sir. Two items, D, item 22-2630, as well as H, 22-2624.
Say E?
E is in dog and H.
D and H. All right. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the items in consent agenda as presented, but pulling D and H for discussion.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Luke to approve the consent agenda as presented, but pulling items D and H for discussion, and that was seconded by Commissioner McDowell. Was, yes?
Yes, sir.
Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Item D, City Manager, 22-2630.
All right, so item D is approval. Approve the award of funds from the Special Event Assistance Program to the People for Trees in support of the Tree Fair for 2022 to be held on April 30 in the amount of $223 to cover the cost of city fees and resources. This item was pulled by Commissioner White.
Commissioner White, please.
Thank you, yes. I saw the need to pull this because, as I am an unpaid board member of the 501(c)(3) nonprofit group People for Trees, and as such, I will abstain from voting on this particular consent item, 4D, as in David. And I also wanted to clarify or just to state that the Tree Fair, this is the 24th year the Tree Fair has been held.
All right. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the award of special event assistance for the People for Trees in support of their Tree Fair.
Second.
I have a motion on.
Let me put in the amount, just to be on, just to be clear, in the amount of $223 to cover city costs.
I'll still second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to approve the award of funds from the Special Event Assistance Program to the People for Trees in support of the Tree Fair to be held on April 30, 2022 in the amount of $223 to cover the cost of city fees and resources. That was made by Commissioner McDowell and seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that, Commissioners? If not, please vote. And that passes four to zero with Commissioner White abstaining from the vote. Number H, letter H, 22-2624, City Manager.
Yes, sir. This is the, approve the earth network's order form and attachment for terms and conditions to provide and install a serpeneic siren weather alert system at the Northport Aquatic Center. It was pulled by Commissioner McDowell.
Okay, Commissioner McDowell?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The reason I pulled this is during my agenda briefing, I had asked if there were any other weather alert systems throughout the city, regardless of who the manufacturer was. The only existing weather alert system is at the Mullen Center. This request is for the Aquatic Center, which would also cover Butler Park. I am, I was really surprised to learn that we did not have one at Atwater Park, nor do we have one at Narromore, nor do we have one at Warm Mineral Springs. And I really feel that safety is paramount. Had I known this sooner, I would have created an agenda item or discussed it during budget. But I can only know what I can know. I would really like to see if we can give direction to, and maybe this is a question we'll have to get answered, to see if we can amend this agreement to include Atwater Park, Narromore Park, and Warm Mineral Springs as soon as possible. We do have money in a contingency fund for commission. If there is nothing in the budget, if the city manager can't find funding elsewhere, we could probably use our contingency. I think there might be a cost savings if we do all of these at one time because they're mobilized here in the city. They can just go from park to park. It might save some money, get a discount of sorts. So, that is why I pulled it. I wanted to have the discussion with my fellow board members.
Okay, Commissioner Luke?
I really appreciate you putting this on, you know, for discussion. You've gone beyond where I was thinking. It is definite that water parks need this. I mean, I attend Warm Mineral Springs, and those poor lifeguards, you know, it takes them 10, 15 minutes to get somebody out of that water. By that time, the storm's blown in, you know, even closer. So, definitely, you know, my thought was toward the water parks. But I'm in a total agreement with you. I think all of those sporting fields need to have them also. And I have no problem of using our contingency fund, if need be, to supply the money. Thank you.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, and the, there's something to be said when you have dawdlers that, oh, I just want five more minutes in the water, I'll be the last one out. But when you hear that siren, holy cow, that lights a fire under your hindquarters. You move really quick because you're not waiting for somebody to say, get out, get out, get out. That siren is telling your body, move, move now. So, I appreciate, Commissioner Luke, your support of this. And I'd love to hear staff and about their thoughts.
Sure. Sandy Penhardt, Director of Parks and Recreation. Certainly appreciate the consideration for all those locations. Our plan, we started with the city center green. Our plan was then to budget as we go, you know, one probably a year. But if we can get them all done, that would be great. We did not do the Aquatic Center initially because we thought that we'd be able to operate with the one at the Mullen Center, but it's not ideal the way it's happening. So, I did want to make a comment about Warm Mineral Springs. We would probably delay that one because we'll be under construction. They not only need a building to install and mount it to, but they also need the internet connectivity. And we do not, we did not install that there. That is something that National and State Park Concession has arranged. It's not in their agreement. I'm sure that they would appreciate having it there, but there could be some challenges in getting that one set up right away since we are going to be under construction.
Go ahead, Commissioner McDowell.
And I appreciate that follow-up information. It's my understanding that during construction, Warm Mineral Springs will be operational?
It will be operational, but none of the buildings. We will be in temporary buildings, meaning portables that are not ours, that we are arranging for through the RFB.
Is there a way to do a, I don't know, if this is even an existing thing? Is there a temporary weather system that can be used?
There's not temporary. If we could find a location to install it and the internet connection was sufficient and National and State Park Concession was willing to allow that, there would be a charge for them to relocate it once the buildings were complete from wherever it was first temporarily installed. I mean, we can certainly look into it and come back with that information. It's just not an ideal situation right now.
Is there, the existing building at Narromore and the existing building at Atwater Park, I would assume would be like the concession stands that has internet?
I'm going to let Assistant Director Wiesner speak to that.
Good evening. Narromore recently received some connectivity. I'll have to see to make sure that it would support this because we did put cameras in there. Atwater does not have anything within the building that we access. I do believe that they utilize Wi-Fi most of the time for the league, so we'd have to look into that connectivity as well.
Cameras at Atwater?
There are a couple cameras at Atwater. Again, very small system that has a special relay.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions, but how long do you feel the construction phase is going to be out at Warm Mineral Springs?
Eighteen months.
So, almost two years. So, we could come back and revisit that one at a later date.
Yes.
But you would be well aware of going forward with the other two, as Commissioner McDowell had suggested.
Yes, however, we would want to research with IT what we may need to put in place in order to make that happen. I'm not positive that each of the parks that we've discussed have the right system there to support that. So, we can do it. It may cost a little bit more than the actual system to get that connectivity. We would just want to look into it.
Right, so if we just go forward with what we have on our slate right now, and then you can have time to look into it, bring back the information, and then we could tackle those other two, you know, fairly, you know.
We could bring it back as budget proposals.
Yeah, and that should be probably the proper time to do that as well. Go ahead, Commissioner Luke.
I totally agree with that. To me, more information is needed to see if IT can come up with something for the other three locations. At-budget time would be a perfect time in order to bring the information back. That still sets us up for the summer storms and stuff. So, yeah, getting that information sooner rather than later, to me, helps potential issues with lightning strikes, especially at water. So, I'd be in total agreement with that, sir.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, and I am very grateful for the conversation and discussion on this. Unfortunately, if we wait for budget and get the information during budget time, by the time we approve budget, this weather season will be over because it takes effect October 1st. I'm with you, Commissioner Luke, as far as getting the information sooner rather than later and addressing it in a more timely manner instead of doing it as a, I don't want to get my hands smacked calling it the wrong thing, but whatever the budget proposal, new name is, and doing it for fiscal year '22, '23 might be a little bit, it's six months away, so.
We can bring back the information. It's just going to be a matter of, one, getting the company out on site to do the site visit, getting the quote, and then also consulting with IT.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, I see no other questions. I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll make two of them. I'll make an motion to approve the agreement with Earthworks for $8,740 to install a siren weather alert system at the Northport Aquatic Center.
I have a motion on the floor to approve the order for $8,740 with Earthworks to install a early warning system at the Aquatic Center.
Second.
That was made by Commissioner McDowell and seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that, commissioners?
No, sir, thank you.
And that passes five to zero. You said you had a second motion?
I do.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city manager and staff to come back with information about installing a weather alert system at Atwater Park, Narromore Park, including the costs, possible funding options, and IT concerns prior to the June budget workshops.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell. Would you please restate that motion?
Probably the clerk may have it. I saw, I heard her fingers going a million miles a minute. She may have it all. I.
I didn't know if you had it written down.
No, I did not. I was going on the fly on that one.
I am wondering if you'll include Warminal Springs in that information also.
Absolutely. I'll make a friendly amendment to that. Absolutely.
To direct the city manager and staff to come back with information to install a weather alert system at Atwater Park and Narromore Park, including cost, funding options, and IT concerns prior to the June budget workshops.
And Warminal Springs.
And Warminal Springs.
Okay.
I'm a second.
And that motion was made by Commissioner McDowell and seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that, commissioners?
And it's to be done prior to the June workshops.
That's what she said.
Okay, I just want, I didn't hear that part. I was right.
I, I did.
Thank you.
If not, please vote. And that passes five to zero. Okay, moving on to Presentations 22-2224. City Manager, I do believe this is your item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the presentation of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2021. We are joined by our Assistant Parks and Rec Director Tricia Wisner, who also has Parks and Rec Advisory Board members joining her as well. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Jim Scheidel and Nicole Everett. They are our Chair and Vice Chair. They will be giving our presentations tonight.
Good evening. Welcome to the Parks Recreation Advisory Board Fiscal Year 2021, 2022 Annual Report. I'd like to introduce our members. Once again, I'm Jim Scheidel, Chair, and this is?
I'm Nicole Everett.
If there's anyone in the audience I call your name, Richard Bieber, are you here? Mark Murphy. We have Gail Stevens. We got James Hirsch, he's right there, and Bert Thomas, are you out here? Okay, those are our members. Since about a year and a half ago, we were down to measly three. We have built up to, we're almost packed and full. That is wonderful. And we've also have, not pictured here, Cara, I'm gonna kill her name.
Persatam.
Thank you. That's why you're here. Appreciate that. That's a student member from Northport High School. Okay.
All right, I'll take it away. For applicable ordinances, the Parks and Rec advisory board works with the City of Northport Parks and Recreation Department in supporting their vision and mission by?
Making recommendations to the, I'm sorry, I don't have my right glasses on here. Okay, making recommendations to the City Commission regarding public recreation facilities, programs, and future projects.
Exploring various sources of grant funding available for recreational programs and facilities.
And supporting and promoting opportunities for play and play spaces in the community.
And being ambassadors in the communication of ideas and projects to the public and supporting the plans and desires of the City Commission. Fiscal year 2021, '22 projects and initiatives.
Continued support of the accreditation efforts through the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies. It's called CAPRA.
Efforts for increased awareness of parks, facilities, and events through social media and outreach efforts.
Evaluation of vacant properties and consideration for proposed park improvements and additional off-leash dog park.
Promote and support the Parks and Recreational Scholarship Program, Adopt a Park Program, and sponsorship opportunities.
Evaluate additional opportunities to increase revenue and decrease expenses.
And remain informed, involved, and offer diverse perspective on parks and recreation programs, projects, and initiatives.
Fiscal year 2021, '22, events and activities.
Funny scramble volunteers.
Freedom fireworks volunteers.
Poinsettia Parade and Festival Volunteers.
You gave me more to read. Evaluated and proposed ideas on additional dog park and potential expansion of existing canine club.
Evaluated and provided recommendations on the weather alert systems for the Northport Aquatic Center.
Thank you very much for voting on that. Evaluated and provided recommendations on the community interest survey.
Fiscal year 2022 and '23 goal.
Support community of unity efforts and programming.
Support programming and efforts to increase water safety, education, and drowning prevention.
Evaluate additional opportunities to increase revenue and decrease spending.
Promote health and wellness initiatives and opportunities for the community.
Explore grant opportunities in support of projects and initiatives.
Remain informed, involved, and offer diverse perspective on parks and recreation programs, projects, and initiatives.
Evaluate the potential locations and amenities for proposed additional off-leash park. How come I keep?
I don't know. Amazing. Fiscal year 2022, '23 considerations. Want me to take this first one?
You go right ahead.
All right. Evaluation of the adopted master plan goals, existing parkland and national recreation and park association standards to ensure Northport, Northport Parks and Recreation has offerings in line with national standards.
Work?
Work.
Okay. Support the efforts of ad hoc committee for the new Armed Forces Memorial Park.
Evaluation and input on prioritizing import improvements that provide inclusive activities and reduce ADA barriers within parks.
Opportunity for involvement in discussions to prevent, to prevent, to provide input. You're rubbing off on me with that. To provide input regarding the development of a possible regional park on land conveyed from Wieland Park.
And Parks and Recreation Advisory Board will provide support for additional connections from Northport to the Legacy Trail Connection Extension.
Are there any questions that we might have to answer?
I'm sure there will be just as soon as some names pop up here. Commissioner Luke?
Ms. Nicole, what kind of work do you do?
Oh, I work for a, um, Indigo Wine Group. It's a wine importer from South Africa. I probably have seen some of products in stores. Won't name any because that would be odd, but it's mostly office work, numbers and reports and such.
You have such a dynamic voice. The emphasis that you place in reading, you could do voiceover. You could be a teacher. You could be inspirational on just about anything that you do, so.
I'm, I'm up for reading anything you need.
Very impressive presentation. Thank you very much. That was the only question I had. Good job.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner McDowell?
I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation. Thank you too for the weather alert. It sure educated me, and I am very grateful for that. Look forward to seeing you next year with your report and the great things that you guys are going to do. You're one of our most active boards, and I appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Langdon?
Yeah, no question, a comment. I just really want to give you guys a lot of credit for filling up your board, or almost filling up your board, and I think that is a sign of good leadership and good engagement. So kudos to you. You're certainly in a highly valued, very busy area of the city, so we really appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
We hope to serve our populace.
Commissioner White?
Yes, thanks for all you do. I, I just had a question that somebody asked me a while ago. Is there an avenue for residents who have ideas for, for parks? If they come to your meeting, there is a public comment.
Yes, there is.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, and then where does it go from there? Because they wanted to know, what does it just get dropped there? Or how does it, who decides whether it's going to move forward or to have like a little, they wanted to know, do they form a little subcommittee when people come up with, with ideas or, or what?
Tricia Wisner, Assistant Director. Typically, I do a recap of every meeting. Sandy and I meet, information goes to City Manager, but you've seen a lot of things come through from this board as memos to you. We have not had many public comments, but if they come, this board is willing to listen and run with it.
Okay. All right, great.
And they're available every third Thursday at 6:30, room 244. It's a great group. 244, we're fun. I can only imagine.
And I bring that up because the Garden of the Five Senses, her name was Jean, I'm sorry, what was her, isn't there a plaque at the Garden of the Five Senses for her? I can't remember her last name now. Joan would know. That was her brain, you know, child, and she just brought that forward, and then that's how that became what it is. So that just started with one resident's idea. So it would be great to see other ideas like that brought forward. So, thank you. Broom, wasn't it Broom? Jean Broom?
Yes.
That's what it was. Yes, there you go.
I was.
I knew, I knew eventually.
I was stuck on Bauer or something like that, but yeah, Broom, Jean Broom, yep. Yes, thank you so much for your presentation, and all the time I've sat up here, I've never really seen people have that much fun presenting to the commission, so.
I'm a bad influence.
Oh, no, it was, it was, it was fabulous. Thank you very much, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there any public comment?
Thank you.
Moving on to public hearings, second reading of ordinance number 2022-07. This is a quasi judicial hearing. Over to you, City Clerk.
Ordinance number 2022-07, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, adopting the Village I Village District Pattern Plan, West Villages, for an approximate 898-acre area located to the west of Frito Boulevard, to the south of future Manassota Beach Road, and to north and east of the city of Northport city limits, amending the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 15, 53, Article 18, Village, Section 53-214, to incorporate the pattern plan by reference, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. Can everyone wishing to provide testimony, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God? Thank you.
Thank you. Ex parte communications, Commissioner McDowell?
The same ex parte that I had at first reading, and I also sent a memo inquiring about the accuracy of the document for the second reading because no changes were made.
Commissioner White?
None.
I had none. Vice Mayor Langdon?
The same as last time. I had had a conversation about the housing types. I think it wound up being in Village I with Mr. Severance, but it was more related to affordable housing styles than it was about this, this ordinance.
Commissioner Luke?
The same that I presented in the first reading, but I also had a discussion with staff in regards to the legislative backup stating changes had been made, but they had not been within the ordinance.
City Clerk, any aggrieved parties?
None.
Thank you. And we'll be moving on to presentation by applicant. You have 20 minutes.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Philip D. Maria for the record, Certified Planner with Kim Lee Horn Associates, Agent for the applicant. Really quickly, just want to kind of address the request for some changes to the document. It was our understanding and coordinating with staff after the hearing that there were consideration for changes. So essentially, what, what we have before you and what was placed in your packet was the document read at first hearing, and then we also have a second version that incorporates all of the changes, and I'll review all of those specific changes in the presentation today, and that's for both Village I and K. So hopefully that clarifies some of the confusion. So Village I, Village District Pattern Plan, a second, second reading. I'll be fairly brief, but once again, Philip D. Maria, AICP, Agent for the applicant. The applicant is Mr. John Lizinski with Manassota Beach Ranchlands, LLP, and we're both here and available to answer any questions as a result of this application. Just for the record, Environmental Consulting and Technology, also known as ECT, prepared the environmental analysis associated with the VDPB and the site analysis. As you all know, this is affiliated with the master development of Welland Park, formerly known as the West Villages. The VDPB and the specific Village I VDPB complies with the requirements established as part of the Pattern Book, also known as the VDPB. Specific to the commission-directed amendments to the Village I Pattern Plan, these are the list of items that were mentioned, page 18, page 19, specific to changes to the buffer requirements that state may include trees and landscaping in median and public frontages and syncing those with the buffer requirements. On page 27, adding the references to figures, that was another comment made. On page 39, as it, as it relates to the new SCAT on-demand service and potential integration into the individual villages, and both of those standards, you can see at the bottom of the, of the page, we've just highlighted them for reference, but once again, there is a different version of the Village, of the VDPB that reflects these changes. On page 44, in Village I only, specific to this pattern, Pattern Plan, changing the reference to figures 18 through 20 to figures 18 and 19, and then page 55, also known as Section 1.9.5, clarifying that the regulations are for site and development and not for the roadways or right-of-ways themselves. I'll run through these slides really quickly. As you all know, this is Village I located at the southwest corner of the incorporated Welland Park. The Village Plan, once we received information about right-of-ways and specific acreages and how it informed the site, we were left over with 897 acres, made, made four residential neighborhoods, one mixed-use node, also known as MU1, one mixed-use residential neighborhood, and then the proposed development maximums, you can see there at the bottom right of your screen, nothing has changed from first reading. This is the illustrative plan and for illustrative purposes only, and the example of what could be built as part of that mixed-use node, and what could be built as part of the mixed-use residential. This is just a, this is included within the Pattern Plan as a summary of the Village Development Standards and a location of where we are in the VDPB adoption process. This is a, this is a process that we followed and incorporated plenty of public input and opportunities for public input as we've come here to the final stage. Once again, this furthers the community goals that are identified within both the Pattern Book, Comprehensive Plan, and the Code. And with that, we're here and available to answer any questions. If you'd like, I can flip back to that page on the changes made.
All right. Presentation by staff. You have 20 minutes.
For the record, Noah Fosseck, Planning and Zoning Division. To mention the legislative text, it was?
State that you've been sworn.
I have been sworn.
Thank you.
The recommended action on the legislative text should have read, "As the Commission may motion to approve BDC 21318, Ordinance 2022-07 incorporating the changes as presented in the first reading." The changes were not incorporated as the motion was to take the changes into consideration for the second reading. for the second reading. As the applicant has mentioned, they have prepared a document with those changes, should that be the desire of the commission for those changes to be made for adoption. Otherwise, the only other change was to the ordinance title block to incorporate, also known as Wellon Park, where it says West Villages. And that's the only changes from the first reading. Thank you.
Yep. Rebuttal? Applicant?
We'll waive our right to rebuttal. Thank you, sir.
Rebuttal? Staff?
Staff has no rebuttal.
Thank you. City clerk, is there any public comment? All right, moving on to commission questions. Commissioner McDowell.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Could you please bring that page back up that had those changes in it?
Certainly. Have it on screen, yep.
Thank you very much. I just need to understand, because the legislative text says that these changes were made. All changes have been made, but they were not in the backup material. Has the backup material changed since this was first posted?
The legislative text incorrectly said that the changes had been made. The changes have not been made to the backup material that you were provided because the motion was only to consider the changes. But the applicant, as they've mentioned, has provided or can provide those changes and has already created the document. It just needs to be motioned and approved as such by the commission.
Lesson learned. I will make sure every item that we need to be changed gets motioned at first reading, so that way then it can be taken care of for a second reading. So thank you for that. The only thing that I am trying to see is it says here "shall include trees and landscaping and median and public frontages." And that's for the boulevards. Will that also include the? There's two major streets that it's called. Boulevard, additional boulevard. I'm not sure what an additional boulevard is, but if you go to page 18 and 19, there, there are figures four and five slightly different. So will this only apply to boulevard? Or will this also apply to additional boulevards?
That's a great question, ma'am. We, it could be clarified in this bullet. We said page 18 and 19, it would apply to both boulevard and additional boulevard.
Sorry, I didn't see that at the top.
No worries at all.
My bad, my bad. Okay, so now we're going to flip over to page 56. And you have on here 1.9.5. These standards are only required for site development and not for roadways or right-ofways. Well, what's a median and public frontage? Isn't that a right-ofway and roadway?
Perhaps you'd like to take this, but our understanding is that there are major roadways and parkways within Wellon Park. Those are public right-ofways, whereas internal streets and sometimes, or internal to a parcel, if it's a commercial parcel, could be a median that is not located as part of the public right-ofway.
So I'm just trying to get clarity here. Should this say these standards are only required for boulevards and additional boulevards? Is that what you're saying?
The, these two requirements are for two separate things. So the additional sentence added to 1.9.5 was to add clarification that these are not for the roadway right-ofways, but are for sites that are abutting a major roadway or parkway. These are site development standards for properties that abut these roadways. But in the roadway cross-sections, the landscaping requirements are encapsulated in those figures. And that's why the language was changed to "shall include tree and landscaping, median, and public frontage."
Okay.
And if I may, just to add briefly, Noah did an excellent job explaining. I think the small confusion there is, page 56 relates to landscape requirements for major roads and parkways, whereas 1.9.5 states the, at the end of the first paragraph, that these standards are only required for site and development, not for roadways or right-ofway. So the clarification is on 55 and not on.
Thank you. The only other clarification that we need to make sure gets captured in the motion is I did send a scripener's error email prior to first reading. It's in the whereas clause that says that the PZAB met on March 7th. Actually, PZAB met on March 17th. That has not been corrected for a second reading. That's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Commissioner White.
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to have some clarification on, I think pages six and seven, referring to the comp plan policy, 13.1, open space, that the open space is to be 10%, correct?
That is correct.
And does it still say that it's not to include environmentally sensitive lands at 10%? So I guess my question is, are wetlands considered to be environmentally sensitive lands?
They are considered to be environmentally sensitive lands. And in our first reading discussion, you'll remember that we had some conversation about whether open space and wetlands were being double counted, so to speak, and that wasn't.
Oh, okay. Because. So on page seven, when it says you identified 241 acres of wetlands.
I know.
And then there's 10 acres that will be impacted, which gives you 231 acres. That you're going to conserve, is that the same, 230? The same? That's being taken from the 241 acres of wetlands, isn't it? I guess it's what we're still confused about.
Sure, understood. Could you, if you don't mind, Commissioner White, could you point out the specific page that you're on?
Yeah, it's on, it's page seven. It's the staff. I think it's the part of the staff.
Oh, no worries.
Yeah, it's part of the staff report.
171 acres of wetlands and surface waters. The VDPB proposes approximately five acres of wetland impacts and five acres of surface water impacts for a total of 10 acres of impacts. That's for Village K. We are reading from the wrong staff report. Apologies, Commissioner. The language should be consistent. The numbers may not be consistent, but between I and K, there should be, you know, an identification of the amount of wetlands and surface waters. And if it's very clear about the specific number of acres that are conserved versus impacted, could you repeat your question as far as maybe some of the clarification needed?
Yes, because on page seven, it says you have identified 241 acres of wetlands and surface waters. 10 acres will be impacted, so that leaves you a net of 231 acres, roughly 25.8% for open space. That's where my question is. It appears that you're using the wetlands as your open space. And my question was, and you answered that environmentally sensitive lands are wetlands, so therefore that should not be included in that?
Understood, yes. So you're absolutely correct. The calculation and the percentage located on that particular page of the staff report relates specifically to wetlands and open space, separate and apart from the neighborhood open space. So understanding that the language used can be a little bit confusing, but those are separate and apart. The open space calculation for wetlands, and then the open space that maybe we'd consider maybe more functional, those are two separate numbers and two separate percentages.
Okay, so is there a place in here that has the open space? That's the functional open space?
Yes, ma'am. On the previous pa, or earlier in that paragraph, you'll notice, as mentioned previously, the village center is required to provide a certain number, a certain percentage of open space. So that's for village centers specifically. And then for the village itself, there should be a separate number. And if not, we can refer back to the development standard page within the VDPB and calculate a separate percentage for you if you'd like that number. But everything does comply with the comprehensive plan and does comply with the land development.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify. So the open space you're talking about, that 10% is separate and apart from this open space you're saying is 231 acres? Okay.
I would like to note that the open space acreage provided here is just for the village as a whole, but that 10% requirement is for site development. So when they come in with a project, they will, each project on its own merits will be assessed if it's meeting that 10% requirement. And I do believe that wetlands are considered in open space per the definition within our code. Checking quickly in this plan, it doesn't appear that they have redefined open space. So it would default to our definition of open space, which does include environmentally sensitive lands such as wetlands. So that 10, with each project that they present for development, if there's a portion of wetland within that project, it can be counted towards their open space requirement.
Okay, hold on one second. City attorney, I know you've been waiting to weigh in. I was trying to get her answers.
No, it's, once all the commissioners are finished, I have a comment. Commissioner White, ever?
Okay, if you want to continue on, then.
Yes, okay. All right. Yeah. I understand wetlands can be considered to be open space if it can be, if the public can actually use it. So. But you're saying that there is 10% that's separate and apart from this 231 acres of wetlands that's open space? That's functional for people to actually use?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that all you had?
Yes, thank you.
All right, city attorney, ma'am?
Thank you, mayor. My comment goes to form, not at all substance, related to the content of the pattern plan. And I would ask the commission to consider if they are going to move to adopt the pattern plan to allow some leeway to update the ordinance for consistency for the name of the pattern plan throughout. The change to the title block that was made prior to second reading now gives a new name to the pattern plan itself, which conflicts with the name that is added into the code in Section 2.02 of the ordinance. And both of those things are different than the name on the front of the actual pattern plan that is attached to the ordinance. So that's something that could be easily changed, you know, following the meetings and following your approval, if you would include in your motion, to have us to work with the NDS department to update the naming change for consistency throughout the ordinance.
All right. Any other commissioner questions? Closing arguments. Staff. Five minutes.
Staff has no closing argument.
Applicant, you have five minutes.
No closing argument. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to close this public hearing and request a motion.
I'll try a motion if you'd like.
Pay attention, city clerk.
Bear with me, mayor.
Well, take your time. We want to make sure this is correct.
Just looking for direction from the will of the board. Would you prefer each change to be a separate motion and then incorporate everything as the? Or do you want it all in one?
I think you can put it all in one.
I just was looking for clarity and will of the board. Thank you for that.
If something's left out, we can add it in or make a second one at that point.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-07, Village I, the District Pattern Plan, with the following changes. In the, in the ordinance, correct the date for the PZAB meeting to be March 17, 2022. To grant city manager to work with NDS and the city attorney for naming changes throughout the ordinance. To incorporate the changes made by the applicant as he presented. I don't know what that's titled. Hang on.
Commission-directed amendments.
Commission-directed amendments that the applicant presented during this second reading.
Is that it, ma'am?
Yes.
Do we need to state anything about accepting the change in the title block and including as known as Wellon Park?
No, that's already in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Make sure.
Wait, wait, there's something about, I don't have my cheat sheet. I don't use them very often. The competence substantial evidence. Can I borrow your cheat sheet?
Cheat sheet actually doesn't have it listed, ma'am.
So that's my motion, mayor, as I stated.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell. City clerk, can you read that motion back into the record? Please.
Yes, it's in a little different order, but to approve ordinance number 2022-07 as amended to incorporate the commission-directed amendments from the first reading and scripener errors in the first whereas clause correcting the Planning and Zoning Advisory Board meeting date to read March 17, 2022, and for the city manager to work with NDS and the city attorney to update the name change for consistency throughout the ordinance.
Okay, and that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. Please vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Okay, moving on to ordinance number 2022-08. This is quasi judicial hearing as well. City clerk.
Ordinance number 2022-08, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, adopting the Village K Village District Pattern Plan, West Villages, for an approximate 636-acre area located to the east of West Villages Parkway, to the south of Future Manassota Beach Road, and to the north and west of the city of Northport city limits, amending the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 53, Article 18, Village, Section 53-214, to incorporate the pattern plan by reference, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. Can everyone wishing to provide testimony please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God?
Ex parte communications, Commissioner McDowell.
Yes, mayor. My ex parte is the same that I disclosed on first reading, and then I sent an email confirming the accuracy versus not having changes made as stated in legislative text.
Commissioner White?
None.
I had none. Vice Mayor Langdon?
The same as our last meeting on this topic.
Okay, and Commissioner Luke?
Mine are the same as the previous quasi judicial, the same items that I had in first reading and then questioning the legislative text stating that all corrections have been made.
Okay. City clerk, any aggrieved parties? Thank you. Presentation by applicant, you have 20 minutes.
Thank you, mayor. Once again, Philip Di Maria, AICP, certified planner.
Certified Planner with Kim Lee Horn, for the record, representing the applicant, Mr. John Lizinski of Minnesota Beach Ranchlands LLP. And I have been sworn. Village K, similar background, exact same background, actually, master development of Wellon Park, formerly known as West Villages. This VDPP complies completely with the VDPB, which has been adopted by the board and provides a broad community framework throughout Wellon Park. And this VDPP provides for specific development standards and land uses for Village K. Very similar to Village I, which you saw. The commission-directed amendments have been provided for in this additional text that we have on the side, and we're happy to incorporate, if directed so, by the commission here today. Very similar changes. Page 18 and 19 may include trees. Has been changed to shall include trees in landscaping, median and public frontages. Page 27 added references to figures 13 and 14. On page 39, added language to refer to the new SCAT on-demand service and potential integration into the village. And Village I, page 44, does not apply. Page 55, as it relates to Section 1.95, clarifying that the regulations are specific to site and development and not for the roadways and right-of-ways themselves. Village K is identified on the Village Index Map as a 674-acre site located on the southeast quadrant of West Villages Parkway and Minnesota Beach Road. The school campus has been accepted from the VDPP, but generally speaking, Village K, after site analysis, was found to have 508 acres, which will consist of four residential neighborhoods. And Mr. Lizinski could speak to the specifics of those neighborhoods. One mixed-use node located in that northeast corner on the— at the intersection of River Road and Minnesota Beach Road. Two mixed-use residential neighborhood centers, which are— which will be the focus of each neighborhood as neighborhood amenity centers. And of course, the proposed development maximums are located at the bottom right of your screen, 1,893 dwelling units, 75,000 square feet of commercial space, and 25,000 square feet of office. Most of that non-residential space is focused in the mixed-use one area. This would be a conceptual rendering of what the residential neighborhoods could begin to look like once the wetlands are compensated for. This is the Village K development standards. Pretty straightforward included within the plan. We can answer any questions as it relates to those. This is a mixed-use example of what could occur at that mixed-use one node. And of course, these are the mixed-use residential examples for those amenity sites that could come to. Once again, for the record, we've complied with the VDPP requirements as it relates to process, going from site analysis, preliminary plan, proposed plan, finally, a final plan, which is heard here today, second reading. And for— just to state for the quasi-judicial findings of fact, this does further the community goals identified within the City of Northport's comprehensive plan for Wellon Park and the Villages as it relates to a range of housing types, open space, multimodality, connectivity, environmental responsibility, and a mix of uses. Of course, we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you again for the time, Mayor.
Thank you. Staff, you have 20 minutes.
For the record, no fossil planning and zoning division, and I have been sworn. Just to reiterate, just like the Village I, the recommended action was incorrectly stated in the legislative text. So, I'd like to update it to the commission motion to approve BDC-21-319, Ordinance 2022-08, incorporating the changes as presented in the first reading. Additionally, the changes have been made if they are desired to be incorporated to the document as mentioned previously. And the ordinance title block has been changed to incorporate, also known as Wellon Park. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebuttal by applicant?
Rebuttal wave. Thank you, Mayor.
And rebuttal by staff?
Staff has no rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, is there any public comment?
There is none.
All right. Commissioner questions? Commissioner McDowell?
I only have one, and it's just—I know that this was asked during first reading, but I don't remember the answer. The school—the school parcels? How many acres of—is that?
130 acres.
130 acres. And is that included in the 636 acres of the entire Village K?
On the index map, yes. The 659 acres identified on the index map, I believe those are included within the overall acreage. Yes.
So, the 130 acres for the school is part of the total overall acreage, correct?
Is part of the 659 acres.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Closing arguments. Staff.
I'm sorry.
Sorry?
I did put my lead on. I have the same comment.
I'm sorry, I did not see it.
I have the same non-substantive comments on this as in the last case.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Related to requesting that the commission allow my office to work with NDS to make sure that the— all references to the pattern plan throughout the ordinance and on the title page of the pattern plan match.
Thank you. Closing arguments. Staff.
Staff has no closing argument. Thank you.
And applicant?
The applicant has no closing arguments.
Okay, I'm going to close this public hearing and request a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2022-08, adopting the Village K District Pattern Plan with the commission-directed amendments as presented by the applicant during today's meeting, and to allow the City Manager and City Attorney to work with NDS for the name change through the ordinance for consistency.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner McDowell. Would you like to read that again, since I've seen you have it written down?
I do have this one written down.
I see that.
To approve Ordinance Number 2022-08, adopting the Village K District Pattern Plan with the commission-directed amendments as presented during today's presentation by the applicant, and for the City Attorney and City Manager to work with NDS for the name change through the ordinance for consistency.
Thank you. And that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that, commissioners? Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Okay.
Thank you.
Does everybody need a potty break before we move forward?
No.
Take 10 minutes?
Good.
You'd like to? Yeah, let's take 10 minutes and—
And then we'll wrap it all up.
Then we'll wrap it up at the end. So, come back at like 7:25, we'll be fine.
Thank you.
All right, we're back in session. Moving on to Resolution Number 2022-R-2. Commissioner McLeod is absent for the month, but she shall be present. Okay, we're on sixty. Uh, City Clerk, can you read by title only?
Resolution Number 2022-R-17. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, amending the non-district budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 for an additional Planner III full-time equivalent in the amount of $46,832, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
And that's the manager, this is your item.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading of the budget amendment for an additional, oops, oh, I am on.
That's probably for me, sir, my lines are on.
Absolutely, thank you. Uh, this is, uh, where was I? Uh, second reading of the budget amendment for an additional Planner III position. Happy to answer any questions.
I do not see any questions.
We're not, yeah.
Or comments at this time. Um, City Clerk, is there a public comment?
No.
And I have one here. Mr. Jeffrey Scott?
It is important to note that roughly half of all local government expenses are for labor and labor overhead costs like employee health benefits and employee pensions. Where do you think city taxes are going when labor and benefit costs continue to rise? What happens to pension funds when the proverbial bubble bursts? Our local government bureaucracy does not have any obligation or responsibility to employ people that are not needed or qualified for the job. I can't think of any explanation or justifications to hire any new hirees that are unqualified because that could put them in a category I will refer to as nonessential. I also believe the city must identify nonproductive employees and any employee that takes advantage of their current position should be put on notice to the contrary. The time has come where numerous position employees are offered a pay cut and others depart by way of attrition. The current city payroll will someday become unsustainable. That eventual outcome could definitely impact the state of our city moving forward in one way or another. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
And, uh, close this public hearing and request motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-17 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Langdon to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-17 as presented, and that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that, Commissioners? Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Moving on to Resolution Number 2022-R-18. City Clerk, can you read by title only?
Resolution Number 2022-R-18. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, amending the non-district budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 for two grants coordinator full-time equivalents in the amount of $35,110, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager, this too is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading of the budget amendment for the addition of two new grant coordinator positions. Uh, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any questions at this time, so I will close the public hearing and request a motion. Oh, wait a minute, is there any public comment? Thank you.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-18 as presented. Second.
I have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-18 made by Commissioner Luke as presented, and that was seconded by Vice Mayor Langdon, and Commissioner McDowell has a tie, and, uh, anything to that? Please vote.
I'll take the tie.
Okay. It came in both ears.
Judy, it was in stereo.
And that passes five to zero. Moving on. Resolution Number 2022-R-19. Um, City Clerk, can you read by title only?
Resolution Number 2022-R-19. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, amending the non-district budget for fiscal year 2021-22 for project manager full-time equivalent in the amount of $60,585, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager, this is your item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading of the budget amendment for the addition of a project manager position. We are here to answer any questions you may have.
And again, my floodlights are not filling up, so I am going to close this public hearing and request a motion.
Is there a public comment, Mayor?
Oh, public comment? Okay.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-19 as presented and with glee. Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Luke to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-19 as presented, and that was seconded by Vice Mayor Langdon. Anything to that, Commissioners?
You forgot "with glee."
With glee, sorry.
It was just emphasis.
Okay. And the glees have it, five to zero. On to Resolution Number 2022-R-20. City Clerk, can you read this by title only?
Resolution Number 2022-R-20. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, amending the non-district budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 for a legislative analyst, point seven-five full-time equivalent in the amount of $14,633, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
All right, City Manager, once again, you're up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading of the budget amendment, adding a part-time legislative analyst position. We're happy to answer any questions.
And we do have a Commissioner question. Commissioner McDowell.
No, Mayor, I don't have any questions. City Manager and staff asked them during first reading. Um, I, I recognize the importance of having this legislative analyst be part of our team. Problem is that it's being requested to start July 1st. There is no state, um, meetings. They, the state legislators are not convening in July, August, September, October, November, December. Usually they'll start December, maybe into, um, January. When I asked the question during first reading, it was to give them a chance to get up to speed. Um, three months to get up to speed when nothing's going on seems a little excessive. Um, I would like to support this, but I cannot with a July 1st start date. October 1st, absolutely, that'll give them a month, month and a half, two months to get caught up to speed when the legislators are elected, get to know them, get to know the new boundaries, all that kind of stuff. Um, so if I could, Mayor, I would like to entertain a motion, see if it flies, as long as, um, after anybody else may have questions or comments.
I do not see any other questions or comments at this time, and nobody's really moving to push their button, so.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-20, changing the effective date to be October 1st of '22.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-20 as presented with changing the effective date to October 1st, 2022.
And when I say effective date, I mean start date, sorry.
Start date of October 1st, 2022. Do I have a second? I do not have a second. I will attain, uh, entertain another motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-20 as presented. Second.
I have a motion on the floor to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-20 as presented by Commissioner Luke and seconded by Vice Mayor Langdon. Anything to that, Commissioners? Please vote.
I already made my statements in the first round.
And that passes four to one with Commissioner McDowell dissenting for reasons stated, ma'am.
This.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution Number 2022-R-21. Um, City Clerk, can you read this by title only?
Resolution Number 2022-R-21. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, amending the non-district budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 for a development technician full-time equivalent in the amount of $14,350, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is the second reading of the budget amendment for the addition of a development technician position. We are happy to answer any questions you may have.
I am not seeing any questions at this time. Um, is there any public comment?
There's none.
I will close this public hearing and request a motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Approve Resolution Number 2022-R-21 as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-21 as presented, and that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that, Commissioners? If not, please vote. And that passes five to zero. Moving on to Resolution Number 2022-R-24. City Clerk, can you read this by title only?
Resolution Number 2022-R-24. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, amending the non-district and capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 for police vehicles in the amount of $139,900, for a fire engine in the amount of $734,872, and for the Legacy Trail Project P22 DPB in the amount of $33,500, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Any Commissioner questions? Or City Manager, this is your item.
Yes, that's all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading, uh, for the budget amendment for the purchase of the police vehicle and fire engine, as well as the placement of the Legacy Trail donation into the proper account for use. We do have our Finance Director, Ms. Kimberly Williams, here, who would like to provide you an update on the purchasing process of the fire engine.
Good evening, Kim Williams. I just needed to, um, ask for one change on second reading, and that is related to the fire engine. Since the first reading, we've worked with the vendor and actually received more favorable payment, um, options for the city, uh, payment, um, whereas we previously were planning to pay the entire amount and receive the vehicle in two years. We now have worked to deal with them where we would pay half of the vehicle and pay the remainder when we receive the truck in two years. That will cost us 9,000 of the prepayment discount, so we're asking that that amount be increased from $734,872 to $743,872.
Commissioner questions? Um, Commissioner McDowell.
So if we have the money with this budget amendment, the only thing it's basically doing is going to cost us $9,000 more and half now, half when we receive it?
Yeah, we'll keep, so that means we'll keep $772,000 in our investments for that two-year period of time, and then we'll also have that leverage with the vendor to be sure we're satisfied with the truck that's delivered before you make the final payment.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. So the total is going to be, say that again.
So the total now will be $743,872.
Thank you for that.
Is that it, Commissioner McDowell?
It is, yes.
Commissioner Luke.
The $9,000 difference, um, by keeping it, will we be making more than 9,000 by, in, with interest and such?
That depends on what the market does. I would say yes, but, um, that works out to about 1% over the two years, so it, it could go either way. Uh, with how far down the market is now, I would say yes, in that time period, it will gain much more than that.
Okay, so with your fiscal knowledge and stuff, you think, um, doing this is a wise decision?
Yes.
And that we might be able to gain, okay, thank you, ma'am.
All right, I see no other questions. Um, any public comment? Thank you. I'm going to close this public hearing and request a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-24 as presented with the following change to the fire engine in the R and R Fire District Fund, changing the amount to
Second.
All right, I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell to approve Resolution Number 2022-R-24 as presented with changing the amount of the fire department, or the fire truck from 734,872 to 743,872, and that was seconded, seconded by, um, Commissioner Luke. Anything to that?
My mic was off, so I needed to say it on record.
And that passes five to zero. Moving on to general business. Let's see, 22-2570, and City Manager, this is your item concerning the Rosetta Spoonbill sculpture.
Absolutely, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. The Art Advisory Board submitted a memorandum recommending the display of the Spoonbill sculpture inside of City Hall on the second floor, and with us today, we do have our Parks and Recreation Marketing and Engagement Coordinator, Ms. Laura Ansel, to discuss the item further.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Laura Ansel, Marketing and Engagement Coordinator. Um, I am joined this evening by our Chair, Tony Kelly, and we also have in the audience our Art Advisory Board Manager, Samantha Parkinson. So, um, at the February 8th, 2022 Art Advisory Board meeting, members of the board voted unanimously to recommend to City Commission that the Rosie at Spoonbill sculpture be displayed on the second floor in what we're calling the Archout Area upon recommendation from the Public Works Director. We did, uh, review multiple locations prior to this recommendation being put forward and reached out to, um, STC, the Sarasota County Schools, the public library, um, as well as considering other alternative city locations such as the Morgan Family Community Center. Many of those locations were not deemed to be feasible due to safety concerns with youth who could climb on it, perhaps not having enough of an indoor space, um, that would allow for the height of the Spoonbill or other concerns in terms of risk and security of not having proper camera locations in the area. So, uh, those were, those, uh, options were reviewed. Uh, facility staff were kind enough to review the location on the second floor here and indicated that would cost approximately, uh, just over $1,000 in labor and materials to install the sculpture at this location, which would include a necessary height modification of just lowering that Spoonbill to fit in that space. And then the current balance of the art account, um, art accounts, which we often call the art fund, is $118,879.80. So, um, I have, in the backup materials, you see we included some photos of the location. We also included the quote from Public Works, and I will let Mr. Kelly speak to the Art Advisory Board's recommendation.
Tony Kelly, Chair of the Art Advisory Board. We, as she said, we went through many places to try to place the Rosie at Spoonbill. It's been complicated, and we feel it needs to be presented the way it should be. It, it's a beautiful piece, it just was placed in the bad spot. Um, I think on the second floor with that balcony, if we put a certain light shining up on it, especially at night when you shining up on it, especially at night when all the lights are out and it's dark, you can see in with the lights, you'll see that spread out. And with the mural downstairs, I think it will complement really well. I know there's reservations about it being in the way, but I think it's going to be up above everybody enough where it'll, it'll cast the right image to what we want to present for Northport. And it would give peace to the artist that created the piece, and the city owns this piece. It needs to be presented well. I would like to see it, you know, it has to be presented. I'd be curious to see everybody's input on this.
Oh, and you're gonna get it. Commissioner Luke.
I think it's a brilliant idea, especially complementing the mural downstairs to keeping with that native bird type of thing. My question, you mentioned people are concerned about it being in the way. Did facility maintenance consider mounting it so that it can roll? I mean, the, the frame on the bottom, if it had rollers to it, could be weighted so that it could be moved if it needed to be moved, rather than drilling into the concrete floor and setting it permanently. I know some people might be concerned because we place Christmas items there. I mean, we can decorate the bird too, but, but has there been a consideration of, I mean, you can lock rollers so that they don't move. You can weight it so that if it needed to be moved, it could be. That's my question.
I think it would be a good idea to make it mobile, you know, because you never know what needs to, if anything happens, it, it should be able to be moved. It's an art piece. It shouldn't be locked into the foundation of the building, you know, so, yeah, I 100% agree with that.
Well, he's gonna give you the answer right behind you.
Chuck speak, Public Works Director. We have reservations of making it mobile just because of the height and the weight of this piece. Very heavy, and it's tall. It really needs to be bolted down. It will be bolted down in a fashion. If we have to move it, we can. But once we put it there, we want it to be bolted to the floor. Someone could bump it, climb, whatever may happen, we have to make sure that the city is covered as far as liability of that thing coming down. It's a heavy piece. It looks, it looks thin and dainty, but it is, it's quite heavy.
And how tall is it?
Currently, it's about 11 feet, I believe.
I'm sorry, but I just walked over there.
We're gonna have to shorten it just a touch, put it in that spot, but it's still going to tower over everything. I don't think it's going to be much in the way, because at the base, really, it is just the base, and then that, the tree that the bird is sitting on.
Okay. I think it's possible because of weight and everything, but I understand risk and needing it to be as safe as possible. A little disappointed that it can't be movable, but I would highly encourage you, when you design it, to be anchored down, that those anchors be able to be unlatched, and it be able to move as, as on a needed basis. Maybe not on rollers, but be able to release it so that it can be moved if we need it moved.
And we can certainly take a look at that as far as our anchoring system.
My washer and dryer sit on wheels, and I move them when I want to.
Back to Mayor Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. It is a beautiful piece, and it needs to be shown. And I love the idea of lighting it at night so you could see it going by the building. I think that's really an excellent idea. I, I want to commend you and the other members of the Art Advisory Board for coming up with such a sensible solution for what to do with the Spoonbill. I really appreciate that. And the fact that the costs will be covered by the art fund sort of wraps this up in a bow for me. So I just want to thank you for a very sensible decision or recommendation, and, and the fact that finally the piece will be able to be seen. I'm really looking forward to that. ETA, you know, once we approve it, when might we see it?
Roughly the end of May.
End of May. Beautiful. Great. Thank you.
Commissioner White.
Yes. So will it be where the brown floor is, on the balcony there?
Yeah.
Okay. And will it be really close to that little, that middle?
I, I think the way, if, if you can envision it, it, the way it's spread out, it's almost like it's meant to be in that spot.
Right.
Like, you know, if, if you look at where it was in front of Walgreens, you never saw it.
Right.
You know, and it, it's such a really cool piece, and the artist spent a lot of time on it. And I really wanted, we all, it's, it's a piece we've been really trying to get, you know, back into the Northports.
Right. Yeah.
But it's, it looks like it's really meant to be there. And, and the thing is, is it's all about discover Northport. And when you uplight something, it shows discovery. So when you see that, it's gonna just make that feel it's all about the discovery, you know?
Right.
And then when you got the mural downstairs, they complement each other. You know, you got the Spoonbill, and then, you know, the San Hill Crane. So it's a lot of what we see here, and I think it represents Northport really well.
Right. I, I love the, the idea. I actually envisioned that when it was removed, and there was talk about moving it indoors, because when I come in, I look up, and it'd be great, I always thought it'd be great to see something up there. It was such a, an underutilized space that we have up here, that I think that it's a wonderful idea to put it there. And this way, you can, like you said, be seen up close and personal, and what the artist did can be appreciated, because like you said, it was lost. And I know we've had conversations about, and we know that they're, they're the palms, Vice Mayor, they're not trees around there that were hiding it. But it was, it wasn't just that. It was, it was that, it was such a busy corner. So I really, I, I love this, the idea, and especially putting the lighting up there. Yeah. Yeah. It would actually look like it's, it's in motion, so to speak, like when you, you come in and you see something like that. And that's what art's supposed to do. It's supposed to give you a, whoa, look at that. And that's what I think this is gonna do.
That's a disco light. Remember that when you're leaving at 11 o'clock at night all by yourself. Whoa.
I can see Chuck's brain going, okay, the cost of bringing electricity out to that spot, am I right? No.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah.
I do think, too, when people come into the City Hall, it represents a grandiose presentation, you know, and, and I think it's just awesome to be able to think that that could be there.
Right. Right. I, I love the idea. Thank you.
Commissioner McDowell.
Okay, so you said it's 11 feet tall? Is that before the modification or after?
It's current state.
Okay. So how tall will it be? How, roundabout, I mean, are you cutting off its legs? How many, how many feet of his legs are you cutting off?
And again, we're not, the, the bird is actually sitting in the branch. So what will be cut is at the base, which is that tree itself.
Palm.
No, this one's a tree.
It's a tree. Yeah.
Palms are on the corner. We will.
Well, technically, it's iron.
Okay. So how much are you cutting off?
I want to think it was about two feet that we had to lower. Don't, I'm not certain. I'll have to look at it again and measure it out.
No, that's fine. How, its wingspan, how, how, from?
Tip to tip. I'm not certain of that. I would think that, a good estimate is probably seven feet across.
Okay. Last one. And this is the reason why I'm asking all these questions, these logistical kind of questions. How wide is it? I reme-
The base is very small.
Right.
The, the tree part is at your base. So the base is just basically wide enough to give a bolt-down surface. As we had to do out there, we bolted into the concrete slab.
Correct. And that's why I'm wondering, how, how big is that bolt-down thing? And here's why I'm asking the question. It's all nice and bright and airy right now, and it's wide open. There are emergency panels that close that off. And I want to make sure that when we put this up, that we're not gonna go, oh, oh, we forgot about that, because it gets shut down if this becomes an emergency center.
Sure. And we will, we, we have plenty of room beyond that, on the outside of that, facing the, the front doors to mount this piece.
Okay.
So we will ensure that those emergency doors will drop.
Okay. I thank you for that assurance. Now, they're having a meeting of the minds with that question.
Well, that was my exact question, too.
Thank you.
From our building official. They are gonna move the bird back. I guess the wingspan is, it's not the width of it, or the, how wide it is, but how wide it is front to back. That's gonna block us from that. So it's not the base, it's the actual wingspan of the bird. So it will be moved back inside those doors. So the doors will come down on the outside of it.
It's not going to be in that archy part. It's more going to be where those partitions are closer to chambers than the archy part.
That's the information I'm getting from the building official.
Move back as far as you can.
Is it still gonna be in that archway there?
We have to push it back towards the Derek Caplegate, building official for NDS. We pushed it back as far as we could in order to fit it in that area, so when the doors do come down, it doesn't stop them in the process. But it'll be pushed back. The wings are actually on the backside of the columns, and the bird faces the chambers.
Okay, so it's going to, you're going to put the bird as close to those windows and guardrail as you possibly can?
Correct.
Okay. Not closer towards chambers.
It will not work any other way.
Okay. So it's going to be back by the guardrail, but it's gonna face, the face of the bird is going to be towards chambers.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Right. Now, I'm on this.
His high knee is gonna look towards the windows.
I'm sorry?
His high knee is going to be towards the windows. Thank you.
All right. But on this picture here, you're, you're showing, we can see that line that goes all the way up, down, and around for the emergency doors. Okay? That's actually going to be sitting on this side of it. It's not gonna be closer to the guardrail. It's gonna be closer to the main walking path on the second floor.
Yeah. We're placing it right there.
Is it possible, maybe you can show us up on the picture here?
We have a corner?
You may have to come up here.
You're gonna be vanna?
Yeah.
Can you, can you unhook it and remove it to drop the doors down?
We would have to move it to drop the door down, so the bird, the base of the bird is supposed to sit right back in here.
Right.
Facing the inside of the lobby. And then the wings are actually, because this is where the rail comes down. They have to go behind here and on the other side, because of the width of the, of the span of the wing.
So then it's gonna be closer to the windows then?
Yes.
Okay. Not in a regular pathway on the second floor?
No, sir.
Okay. That's, that's what we're trying to get at, and it sort of got jumbled up in, in conversations, because, because of those emergency doors.
And it won't be facing over the railing?
I think the wings became a problem. If you face it the other way, they will stop that door from rolling down.
Thank you very much for that very in-depth conversation about location.
It took a while to figure out how to fit it there.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sure.
How, how did you go about looking at that? Was the bird brought in? Or did you take the measurements? How did you come to determine that the emergency bars were prohibited by the bird?
The bird is currently in our receiving room, and we took detailed measurements on the, the width and the depth of it to fit it in there.
I, I will admit, I'm skeptical.
I am.
I'm very skeptical at this point. I really don't like the rear end of the bird facing over the balcony. You don't want to shine a spotlight on that.
I don't know about the spotlight. I'm just trying to make it, the, it, it fits in the space that we allocated.
You're trying to make it fit, but-
We're trying to get it to that space. It's just a very large piece of art to put there.
Here's one for Parks and Rec, and, and I've preached this all along. Have you taken any consideration to looking into when the Warmwell Springs main buildings are refitted and structures on putting the Spoonbill inside there? Possibly like how we have it right now. You have that hallway that goes from the front building all the way back to the springs. You have gift shops. You have all sorts of different areas out there for that. And, and I have always asked about that. Trying to scrunch it in this small area City Hall, I'm, I'm very, very cautious.
Sandy Funtler, Parks and Recreation Director, at this time, there is not an indoor space in the plans for Warmwell Springs that it, that would work at. It could certainly go outside. However, we were trying to prevent that happening, because it didn't do well outside. So we have a built-in space for the mandala as part of the renovation. It's, it's outside, but it's kind of recessed. But we have not done anything with the Spoonbill at Warmwell Springs.
I was just thinking, like, with the structure of the buildings itself, you know, it wouldn't fit inside according to the roof heights or anything like that?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Commissioner McDowell.
There is a overhang. I, I'm, I'm just exploring options, because, and I'm sure you guys have already had this conversation. We aren't privy to it. So that's why we're kind of trying to come up with other alternatives. 11 feet tall, seven feet wingspan, I, that's, that's a monstrous thing. Have, we considered possibly a different location, maybe the Aquatic Center. It has an overhang. It's not quite out in the elements as much. It might, I, I'm kind of grasping at straws here, because I just don't know now if this is the perfect location, considering the logistics of those doors having to close, and the high knee being shown, as opposed to, and I'd, I'd hate to have the high knee being facing chambers. That would really make an interesting article in the newspaper.
So, yes, for the record, Laura Ansel, Marketing and Engagement. So yes, ma'am, we did have specific criteria when we were exploring alternative locations. Some of those included it being an indoor location due to its previous experience outside. Even under overhang, we weren't completely sure that it would be safe under there. We wanted it to be open to the public so that foot, foot traffic could come in, and it could be enjoyed by anybody at any time. And security was a big factor in that. Now, at many of our facilities, we do have kids who like to climb and get on things, and so there is a risk factor where we felt it would have been more secure at this location as opposed to out at one of our locations that has a larger youth presence and more foot traffic there. We, we have seen how dearly beloved our chair is being utilized, and they do like to climb on it, but it does lead to some wear and tear, so.
All right. Thank you so much.
Commissioner White.
Yes. So, Mr. Kelly, that was not what you had envisioned.
No.
You were thinking it was gonna face out. That's what I was thinking, too.
I would like to offer my service artistically to work with them, to see what we can come up with creatively to make it work. Rather, I think it's meant to be there. I just think that we have to find the right angle to make it work. Having it backwards will not work.
No.
That, that just will not present well. And-
It's not gonna present well.
That's, it, it, it would ruin the flow of the building, the flow of everything. And if it physically can't be there, then we definitely have to go another way. But I really would like to pursue and have the ability to pursue with them, to see what we can do mathematically to get it to fit right, because I think it's really meant to be there, and I wanna, I wanna give it everything we can before we give up on it. And then, if, if it just doesn't work, then it just doesn't work. I would really, really like to give it the chance to make it work, because I think it would present- Because I think it would present so well.
Can I offer another option possibly? That I've always looked at that, that alcove that's by the stairwells, that's just such empty space. I know at Christmas, that's a Christmas village in there. But, you know, I'm envisioning walking up the stairs and you would see that bird from different angles and,
That could be really.
So that maybe could be another possibility. Because I'd love to see that here in City Hall. I mean, this is where people come, that's their first impression when they come here. And it's a beautiful building, you know, outside and inside. But to add, add something like that there, I think would really, with that mural, that's all going for the, the vision that we, we have to present to people, that first impression. So I'd love to see that sculpture stay here and not be someplace else.
That, that, I think, is what our goal really is, is to have it stay off.
Right.
I agree with you. If, if it can't get into that position, I think we could, you know, try, try that, that position. I just really feel that we need to see it all the way through people.
I would like to just add, Ms. Parkinson did remind me that it is a three-dimensional sculpture. And so it was designed to be seen from multiple angles and from all around as a 360. Sharing that for the record. Also, Commissioner White, I'd love to see a, a Santa hat knitted for the cozy hat. I'm sure you have that ability.
And, and in walking up the stairs, you'd, you'd be able to look down on it, actually. So you would see it from more, from more angles. So just keep that in, in mind as an option, yeah. So, thank you.
Commissioner Luke.
I think Alice hit on the perfect location for it. When you're ascending the stairs, you can view it and it will look like it's in flight. No, you're not going to be able to see it from out of the windows, you know, lighting it up or that. But I think you wouldn't have to be manipulating the design of it, reconfiguring anything. I, I really like that. It probably wouldn't even have to remove any of the branch, you know, to shorten it. It could actually stand the full, full height. So Alice, thank you. I think that is an excellent solution.
And it's also right there where the mural is going to go. Isn't, doesn't that alcove go right out to where the, the birds are going to be?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
It's all complimentary.
So if I may, perhaps what we could get is your agreement that City Hall is a good home for it. And we could explore those options and direction from the Commission to explore whether the stairwell would be adequate in size and space. Fortunately, we do have a meeting with Mr. Kelly tomorrow to discuss the mural. So we could explore that as well as the harched out area and do some additional measurements.
So.
Well, hold on.
I was, I was just going to say, I, I also thought the first floor would be a good location for it. But not, I didn't suggest it because at that time, I was thinking of it. I didn't think that area would be large enough wingspan-wise to accommodate it. If it's seven feet wide, that's, I don't know if there's enough space for it, but that's something you'll have to either bring back or, or discover yourselves. But I am inclined to say to keep it here at City Hall. But I don't want to fit a sardine, a, a, a Spoonbill in a sardine can either. I want it to be able to be seen and not like an afterthought. I, I would like to hear more information because based on this conversation, maybe this location is not the right one. And I don't know where it would go if it's not here. We have a new utilities building that's coming up. Maybe something like that there, I don't know. There, there, there is going to be a perfect home for it. We just don't know where that is yet. And I think we need to have a little bit more information to be able to proceed effectively with this. And Public Works has a whole new building coming up, too. So I, I'm, I'm going to reserve based on more information as necessary. So thank you.
Right, and, and I'm, I'm in total agreement with that. I don't mind seeing it here in City Hall. I don't want, I don't mind giving you that direction. But I don't want you saying, well, it's at City Hall and this is what we did with it. I would like to see it come back with renditions on, this is how it's going to look here, or this is how it would look here. And then we make the final decision on, okay, do we want it in the stairwell? There may be other ways of mounting it in this area over here yet. That's to be discovered. So, I mean, I, I think we're almost there. But I, I think more information is, is needed as well. Commissioner Luke.
I would like to ask, I've never seen those bars or that door or those emergent thing, emergency things used. What are they used for? How often are they used? I mean, would you be able to unmantle this Spoonbill if it was attached in time to drop the doors? I mean, I don't know what they're for.
They're, they're fire doors. And I'm not going to speak for the fire department, but I know for a fact they're not going to allow us to disengage that.
It's a fire door.
Yeah, it's a safety factor that happens. So anytime you hear those alarms going, and we're testing the systems, those doors lock down. Our doors on the stairways locking. So the locking mechanisms all release the doors and the doors close.
And that's all automated.
Yes.
So it is automated to drop, so you don't have time to unhook it or anything. All right, then, again, I like the idea that Commissioner White came up with. I would love to see it on display somewhere. I don't really want to wait two or three years for something to be built to potentially go somewhere else. I would love to see it flying up the stairwell. Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment, City Clerk? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion. If nobody else wants to, I'll see how this goes. I'll make a motion for staff to work with Mr. Kelly, facilities, maintenance, fire department, everybody involved, to find a perfect location that it will fit within City Hall using the second floor and first floor alcove as options and bring back additional information for final decision.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Would you repeat that, Commissioner McDowell?
To have City Manager work with staff and Mr. Kelly to come up with the perfect location of the Spoonbill at City Hall using first floor alcove and second floor arch area and bring back additional information for Commission final decision.
All right, and that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that, Commissioners?
I, I would just like to make a quick comment on that. Do we really want to limit staff's perusal of those two areas? Or would it be better to just open it up? I think it's been the will of the Board that it'd be here at City Hall. But I would lean toward keeping it a little more open. If they find a third location here that works best, I, I would want them to have the latitude to explore that.
I'll make, we can have that as a friendly amendment to here at City Hall. I just didn't hear any appetite for third floor. That's why I just kept it to first and second floor.
Let's leave it open. Okay, that'd be great, thank you, Commissioners.
Friendly amendment to have it for third floor.
Want to make the amendment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make an amendment to that motion that we keep the locations open to someplace in City Hall, but not restrict it to the first or the second floor.
Second.
Okay, there's an amendment motion on the floor made by Vice Mayor Langdon to keep the areas open throughout City Hall rather than restricting it in the original motion. And that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. So can we please vote on the amendment? And that passes five to zero. And can we please vote on the original motion as amended? And that passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your work. Appreciate it.
Are you going to be around until the end of the meeting? Or are you heading out? I was, I, I got an idea I just wanted to pass through to you afterwards. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to 22-2735. City Manager.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is discussion of possible action regarding art fund contributions required for new development for Section 59-5 of the City of Northport Unified Land Development Code. And at the December 8, 2020 regular meeting, Commission discussed changing the amount of art contributions required under that code from a maximum of $250,000 to a maximum of $150,000. It was intended that the change would be incorporated into the ULDC rewrite. Since the rewrite is still in process, Commissioner Luke has requested a discussion on correcting the language in that section to reflect the amount directed by the Commission at the December 8, 2020 meeting. We are here to answer any questions, but I'll turn it over to Commissioner Luke at this time.
Thank you very much, sir. Mayor, we had a discussion not too long ago where I emphatically stated, yes, that has been changed. In fact, Assistant City Manager Balia was in the same belief. Yes, we agreed on those things. Commissioner McDowell pointed out that, no, the ordinance did not come through. So I started digging into things. And you have all of the backup from when we reviewed this in December of '20. We had agreement on how we wanted it changed, what we were going to be doing. But in that meeting where we were discussing it, we had mentioned how maybe we don't, as a city, want to handle all these art fund purchases, that we might want to encourage the developer to actually purchase and place their artwork themselves. So we agreed on all these pricings and everything. And we thought the ULDC was going to be coming along a whole lot quicker than what it is. In fact, it's on hold. I'm wondering if, in addition to what we already planned, do we want to incentivize the developer? Maybe give them a 20% discount if they place the art themselves, purchase and place themselves? That way, it's not on us. I mean, it's been a couple of decades that we've been talking about this public art out at Walgreen, just here on the corner where the Spoonbill was. So I'm wondering if the Commission would possibly entertain an incentive of possibly 20% to entice the developer to purchase and place the art themselves? That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Just waiting to see who's going to pop in first. Commissioner White.
Okay, yes. And when I had my agenda briefing, I thought I was in, in the twilight zone because I didn't remember any of this discussion. Because I wasn't here. That was the meeting I left.
That could be why.
Oh, it was, it was back when I was there. I don't remember any of this. What happened? And that's when I had to leave early. So, you know, forgive me for asking some questions here. So all these scenarios, these are different options that are on here? That you, all of these.
Actually, this was something that was brought up before you were even on the Commission.
Oh.
So it wasn't that you had even left, it was even before. This was in December of 2020.
Okay.
And so it has been a year and a half, almost,
Okay.
that this was discussed. We agreed upon these, these amounts. And instead of waiting, you know, for the ULDC, I wanted to see this implemented. But because we had that discussion of trying to encourage the developer to do it instead of resting on the city, maybe we incentivize them by giving a discount if they do it themselves.
Yeah, I like that, I like that idea. So my only other question is, the current ULDC says 5% of the, 0.5% of the total construction costs. So you're, you're talking 20% would be off of that, that example number there?
I believe the new amount was 40 cents per square foot, up to a maximum of $250,000. So whatever that calculated to, if it calculated to $10,000, they would only have to spend $8,000. If it was $100,000, they would only spend $80,000. If it was the complete $150,000 that we changed it from the 250 to the 150, they would only be paying $120,000 for the artwork if we gave that 20% incentive. So you would calculate out what it would be. But then they, if they took the artwork on themselves, they would only be required that amount instead of that full amount if we did it ourselves.
Okay, so it's already changed to the, the 40, the square footage, using square footage?
We had agreed to that in that meeting, but it never got placed in the ULDC. So that's what I was doing, was bringing it back to see if we couldn't get it in, you know, in place. But before we just say, yes, we agreed on this and we're going to put it in place, I was wondering, because so many think that it'd be best to encourage the developer to do it, I thought about a 20, 20% incentive.
Is that all you had, Commissioner White?
I guess, I, I just, yeah, I just feel like I'm, I'm late to the party. I just don't.
You are. Commissioner Langdon, you're up.
Just for clarity, if the developer is doing their own art, so let's say they choose that option, why would they pay anything into the art fund?
They wouldn't.
They would not. Right now, let's say the way it calculates out, it's $100,000 worth of art that has to be provided. Now, if they do their, if they don't want to do their own art, they have to pay the city the $100,000.
Right.
But if they provide their own art, it has to be the same equivalent. Has to be $100,000 worth of art.
So you're suggesting $80,000 as an incentive?
Exactly, for an incentive for them if they place their own art. Otherwise, if they don't want to, they pay us the $100K.
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got it?
Yep.
And Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, I, I love the idea of the incentive. I was considering even a 25% to really entice them to do it themselves. We have seen numerous times art things coming before us and we get so hung up on it. And I think that the developers, the art that they choose kind of shows the personality of that development. All you got to do is look at Cocoa Plum and you see the giraffes. And you come out here and you see the seashells. It, it's, it's really neat to see the variety throughout the city based on what those developers, they have requirements that they have to follow as far as getting approvals and, and what it has to be. But I was even considering like a 25% incentive to really let them just do it.
And I, I think you must have been reading my mind because I was very amenable to the 25%. It was Assistant City Manager Yarborough who suggested the 20. Yeah, I got you.
The only other thing.
But I don't mind 25% because I, I think that little bit of extra might be motivation for it.
Exactly.
He's always looking for money for the city, so, I mean.
Yeah, but this, it, it's not really for the city. It has to be used for art. And let's face it, we're not artists. We've all recognized that. The only other thing I want to bring up is that I had made a request after I saw how much was in the art fund. And I was kind of taken aback that there's $118,000 after the, we'll call it $50,000 in expenses. We've had a whole heck of a lot of development in our activity centers over these past few years. And I was really expecting it to be much higher because I don't see much art out on Toledo Blade. I don't see any art out on Toledo Blade. And we've had quite a few developments going in. And I just thought at these rates, a maximum of a quarter of a million dollars or a minimum of like $1,500, and it all goes by size, I'm sorry, it goes by cost of construction of the project, I was really expecting that art fund to have a huge amount of money in it. So I asked the city manager if we could get, the past three years, an accounting showing which development, the amount and the date, to see who is paying into our art fund versus the list of which ones did their own art. Out here, they did their own art. But again, Toledo Blade is void, but look at all that development that's going on. And with all respect to City Manager, he says, that's a lot of time, that's a lot of energy. He would prefer getting the okay from you guys to have staffs expend that time and effort because he wants to have it the will of the board as opposed to just me asking for a small tidbit of information. And I respect that. So I would like to see if we can get a consensus, or if you want a motion, Mayor, to direct the city manager to provide that breakdown, like I explained. Because something's not right with this $118,000, considering all the development in these activity centers.
Right. And actually, let's state to the task at hand on the one right here first.
Of course.
Where we're at. And did you have more on this topic?
No, I was going to state the same thing, that it's two different.
That's what I'm saying.
Two different issues. So I'd really rather address how we're going to approach this in the future. As far as figuring out what has happened in the past, we've got different reins right now. I don't know if there was anybody that was in charge of overseeing and calculating, keeping track and all that kind of stuff. And we've got those kind of people in place. I don't mind starting fresh with the new code. And just, we know there's 118 in there.
All right, well, let's get back to the original topic again.
Thank you.
Because now you're skewing yourself moving forward.
Exactly.
Commissioner Langdon?
Yeah, I'm back to the second topic. So let's deal with the incentive issue, and then we can go back and talk about our path forward.
Is there any public comment? Okay, then I'll request a motion, please.
I'm moved to approve the agreements, the Commission agreements, from the meeting of 12/8/2020. The formula to calculate, but adding to that a 25% incentive for the developer if they place the art themselves.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Luke. Would you please restate that?
To approve the Commission agreements from 12/8/2020, formula to calculate adding 25% incentive for developer if they place the art themselves.
And that was seconded by Vice Mayor Langdon. Anything to that, Commissioners?
No, sir.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, based on the motion, Commissioner Luke, are you wanting them to come back with first reading? Or are you wanting them to come back with ideas on this incentive or what it's going to look like? Because I would like to see first reading.
I mean, we don't even have a first reading out there yet. We have this agreement of what, so they are going to have to draft the ordinance to change the code.
So is that what your motion is wanting to have done? Is that the end result that you want them to come back with first reading?
Exactly, so that the code can be changed finally.
Can I make an amendment to capture that then? Or do you want to restate your motion?
Go ahead, make the amendment.
I'll make an amendment, Mayor.
Go ahead.
To direct City Manager to work with City Attorney and staff to bring back first reading ordinance as stated by the original motion.
I'll second it.
Can I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell? Would you please restate that?
Bring back ordinance for first reading as captured by the original motion.
Thank you. I meant amendment. And that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. Let's vote on the amendment. Please. And that passes five to zero. And as soon as this is reset, okay, please vote on the original motion as amended. And that passes five to zero. Okay, moving on to 22-2741. City Manager, this is your item.
Yes, sir. This is discussion and possible action regarding the Community Economic Development Advisory Board Memorandum dated March 22 of 2022 regarding board composition and term length. The Community Economic Development Advisory Board submitted a memorandum recommending changes to the term lengths and limits, as well as changes to the composition of the board membership. From a staff standpoint, we are in favor of their memorandum and their recommendations. I am here to help answer any questions you may have. I do not believe we have any other staff in the economic development or the advisory board here in attendance this evening. Commissioner Luke asked for this item to be discussed, so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Luke.
Again, this is an advisory board that's bringing a memo forward, sending it through the city manager to us. I just put it on so that we could discuss. The things that they are talking about really changes the code in the setup, and it would make this board totally different than all of the other boards because of their length of service. I mean, it's kind of like looking at a commissioner, you have only X amount of years, but they are able to take a year off and then come back. Commissioners can't even do that. You get your eight and you're out. Well, maybe. But I, so I just brought it for discussion to see, I mean, we're supposed to be discussing the advisory boards in an upcoming workshop, I believe it is. So I didn't know if this is something that the Commission wanted to talk about in that workshop as we talk about all of the other advisory boards. But because they sent the memo, I wanted to bring it forward for discussion. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, I'm glad you put it on the agenda. I think you beat me to it. This is a very, another very active board, and they have a lot of additional insight that helps this board make some decisions. They make recommendations to us on things that are economic development. I don't know about changing it from two years to three years because, like Commissioner Luke said, that's changing the makeup. And if you're going to do it for this one, maybe we should do it for the other ones. The no more than 11 members, I went back to look at the code, and the code says, this advisory board shall consist of up to 11 members. To me, it's the same thing, up to and no more than, it's tomato, tomato to me. I don't quite understand their reasons for wanting to change something so insignificant, in my opinion. I'd love to understand that reasoning. And then changing and adding targeted industries, are we going to be adding all of those targeted industries as additional opportunities? I really wish we had a little bit more information on this, to be honest with you. Currently, there are seven members, and most of them are within financial services, real estate, and Northport residents. There's only one that is a subject, and that is public relations. So I'm not too sure what the difference is between financial services and fintech. To me, the financial technologies is, I don't know. I just wish we had a little bit more insight into their reasoning behind it. Maybe if we could find out how long they have been talking about this, maybe I can go back and listen to the meetings and hear the conversation. But not knowing how long they've been talking about this, I would, those are kind of my thoughts.
Vice Mayor Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I think the first recommendation makes a lot of sense to me, changing their term from two to three years. Economic development is a very long-term play. And so I think it really does take a longer period of time to see something through. So I would be very open to that recommendation. It just makes a lot of sense to me. I also have a lot of questions about the second recommendation. I can philosophically understand wanting to incorporate our target industries into the board makeup, but we currently don't have any companies in those industries here in the city. So it doesn't quite line up for me. I would be really open to having this advisory board come and make a presentation and maybe talk a little bit more about what their thinking was and to be available to answer questions. So that would sort of be my inclination, is let's not try to second guess what they were thinking. I mean, certainly, we can go back and listen to their conversations, but I think it would be a lot more meaningful to have them come here and share that with us and give us an opportunity to chat with them about it.
That is why I thought about the workshop that's coming forward to talk about the advisory boards. Maybe we could invite them to that to talk to us.
Yep, that'd be great.
Commissioner White?
Yes. Commissioner Luke, thanks for bringing this forward. And I think three years is good. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that up, that, yeah, you just get started and then you're off. Yeah, so I like that. But I also have to respect the discussions from this board. If they're bringing this forward, they have their reasons for wanting that. And I know we don't have these industries here, but the goal is to bring those industries here. So, and this would be someone who maybe is in that field, but they're working outside of Northport, obviously, but they could sit on the board, correct? And that, and we would want to capture that talent, to say, okay, what do we need to do to get you to, you know, bring that industry here? And then you could work here. So I understand how they would want to have these members sitting on that board in order to attract the industries that we want to attract. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, the only thing is, is with this board, I didn't go in to see how many of them actually live in Northport, but there is a residency requirement that the majority of the regular members be city residents. And I don't know if these additional occupations, I'll call them, have city residents that can serve on this board in that capacity. The only time it says that they have to be, the majority have to be Northport residents, but if there's anybody unable or unavailable to fill a specific category occupation, the applicants can be considered for membership. So we have to be very careful, too, if we're adding all of these other categories, will the makeup of the board no longer be made up of city residents? So I, maybe, maybe instead of having a presentation, I like that idea, Vice Mayor, maybe we should have a joint meeting with them. It's been a while. Maybe a joint meeting would be more beneficial because if we're having a workshop, no official action can take and take place, and then they would have to send a spokesman to represent because of their sunshine laws. So maybe a joint meeting would be the better way to go, instead of having them come, one person from their board come to represent their board at a workshop.
Commissioner Luke?
Throwing it out there.
And then we need to be wrapping this up.
Yeah, I would really rather have a whole discussion about advisory boards in one meeting. The liaison can actually speak for the board in, you know, in that workshop. The workshop is for us to brainstorm stuff, and then staff listens and brings something back at that point. If the three years is amenable to this board, I would advocate making all of them three years then. They serve three years, they put in for their second term, so they end up serving six years. So then they can take a year off and then come back and do another six years, the way it's written right now. But I don't like odd man out, what's good for the goose is good for the gander to me. So I would be more inclined to say all of them. What Vice Mayor was talking about, there are seven different categories in this list, and I don't know the mix of what they've got now in putting this in, what it does when they're going to limit it to 11 members. It's just very confusing, and I would have to see their thought process of who they're going to remove, who they're going to put in. Totally understand them wanting the targeted industries represented, that's smart. But I don't know if they're going to be removing one that I think is important, too, and replacing it with aviation and Aerosmith when we don't have a landing strip. So, and I wasn't trying to be, I was just being silly saying that, but I would want more information before making any kind of decision. So I would rather see this come back for more discussion with the liaison at our workshop for advisory boards. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Langdon?
Yeah, I agree. I'd really like Ms. Mel's take on this as well. So I would be much more inclined to sort of table this for tonight. And I don't care what form it takes, if it's a presentation or a joint meeting, maybe, you know, again, Ms. Mel could sort of recommend what would be the best path forward.
But if we take no action, I mean, it's left in the hands of the city manager. He's figuring out his workshops, he'll bring, you know, a workshop forward. So, Mayor, I don't think we even need to do anything with it then. Or unless we want to say that we'll address this in a future workshop.
Mayor, if I can add, I think out of respect for the board who presented a memo to us, we have a, we need to advise them that we visited this, we need more information, we're going to table it for a future discussion. At least let, at least acknowledge to them would be the correct course of action, in my opinion.
That we're very open to their recommendations.
And that's what I was getting at.
But we need to send them a memo and just let them know. And I think if anything, that would be the motion.
I wouldn't say table it, but we had discussion and we were going to further discuss it.
We visited at a future date.
Exactly.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, if the.
You will in a second.
Absolutely.
Any public comments, City Clerk? All right, now you can go, Commissioner McDowell.
Cut me off. I was going to say, if there's no further discussion. I'll make a motion, Mayor, to direct the city manager to send a memo to the CDAB board, thanking them for their recommendations, that we did have a conversation, and we are going to have future conversations on this matter.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner McDowell to direct the city manager to write a letter, or a memo, excuse me, to the Economic Development Advisory Board and to allow, to let them know that we have discussed. let them know that we have discussed this item and we are looking into future discussions and trying to gain future, more future information in the future. And that was seconded by Commissioner Luke. Anything to that? Please vote. Back to the future.
I was just going to say the same thing, you got it out before I did.
And that passes five to zero. All righty, we're moving on. Is there any public comment?
None.
All right. Commission Communications. I did a council of government meeting on the 14th of this month. It was up at Sarasota Memorial, wasn't it, city manager?
It was, yes, sir.
They got the greatest food up there, don't they?
It was nice.
It's coming down here soon.
It was nice.
It is.
And I was on the Real Talk Radio with John Rawlings on the 18th. We had good discussions about stuff related to the city and upcoming events and past events and what we had discussed on the dais. And it was very informative. We had a good, good time. I went to the River Road groundbreaking ceremony, and that was this past Friday. Very, very nice morning out there. There was a breeze and had attending by our state rep Buchanan, our congressman Stube was there. We had Sarasota County Commissioner Ron Cutzinger was there. So everybody that was there was a little piece of the pie that actually made that happen. And we were able to get it fast-tracked up by two years, and it's under construction. So, Vice Mayor, you're up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a bunch of things I'll just go through quickly. I attended the Wellen Park Safety Center ribbon cutting and had a great tour of that facility. What an awesome facility. I attended the bunny breakfast put on by Kiwanis at the Old World, and that was just the most heartwarming, wonderful thing that I've done in a very long time. Went to the homeless-to-home luncheon, and I am always inspired by the passion of the nonprofits who participate there. They are incredible. The employee service awards were great. The fire and rescue awards dinner was, again, one of those just incredibly meaningful events. And one of the things we learned while we were there is that nationwide, the survival rate of people who are serviced by fire and rescue organizations in situations where they have cardiac arrest is 15% survival rate. Here in Northport, it's 44%. I was floored by that statistic. I mean, I've always known that our fire and rescue is just top-notch and incredible, but it's a statistic like that that just really makes you take a deep breath and be very glad that we live where we live. The other thing I'll mention is, city manager and I did meet and greet at Cypress Falls this morning. It was incredible. We had probably about 40 people. They were very engaged, a lot of questions. Most rewarding was we got a lot of positive feedback. People really feeling that the city is going in the right direction. A lot of positive feedback on our city manager. So I kind of, we did a good job when we hired Jerome. So with that, I will zip it up. Thank you.
Thank you for zipping. Commissioner Luke.
I love you. I attended the chambers after hours. That was over at Northport High School. The Education Foundation was the host. Doggone egg hunt. It's always cute. Thank you, Parks and Rec. I attended the ribbon cutting for HCA, which is Inglewood Hospital. They opened up an office, a primary care office in Wellen Park. There was the ribbon cutting, of course, for our safety building, our Station 86. Phenomenal. That is bragging rights like crazy. I attended the AICE Award Night for the high school. Those are the students who have honors. Great. It was huge. It was down at the huge center down in Punta Gorda, and that room was full of parents, kids, I mean, just, we have some smart kids in our city. It was great. I was able to judge one of the art center's gallery shows. Had a teen court meeting. Teen Court is doing exceptional this year. Everything is above last year, month over month. Attended a EDC meeting. They are, they, the county took away the incentive fund ability from the EDC, so there's some strategic maneuvering going on currently. Nothing has finalized at this point, but I'll bring back when it does. Attended ChambersNet at noon. Attended the high school's dance show. That was just incredible. The Atwater's Earth Day, the reading, the ground, I'm going to hold that one for last. Fire Department Award Ceremony, Northport. Had a band concert Sunday I attended. Attended the budget meeting out at STC with the city manager. It's nice to have those locations moving around the city. And the employee service awards. Today was Giving Challenge until noon tomorrow. I stopped into KDW Radio. I'm a board member there, so I stopped in, tried to help out with Giving Challenge. I attended the bunny breakfast with the Kiwanis, too. They're always adorable. The last two things I'm going to tie together. I spoke today, public comment, at Charlotte County Commission Meeting. And the reason that I did so was at the groundbreaking for the widening of River Road. Dave Hutchinson, the executive director of our Sarasota County MPO, spoke with the mayor, myself, and Chris Constance, who is a commissioner in Charlotte County. He was basically trying to alert us that if we don't do something at the local level, the state is going to push those interchanges, the possibility of interchanges on 75, they're going to put it on a back burner. And so he was really pointing it towards Charlotte County more than Northport. But I suggested that maybe we have a joint meeting, and Dave said, that sounds wonderful. He thought that that would be enough action, that the state might say, oh, yeah, the, you know, the local municipalities, you know, are striving for that. So I addressed those items at the county commission in Charlotte and told them that they would probably be hearing from our city. So with that, the only other thing I want to say is, it's so kind of everybody who has sent a message or acknowledged the Home Rule Hero Awards. It's just, it's an honor to serve this community, but it's very humbling to have so many people recognize it. So, thank you.
Commissioner McDowell.
I attended the Northport Fire Department's pinning, and like Vice Mayor, was shocked at that percentage of cardiac arrest recovery. My gosh, that's huge. And I think that should be screamed from the rooftops to let everybody know, because that is one phenomenal statistic y'all should be very, very proud of. I got to read for Earth Day at Atwater Elementary to kindergartners, second graders, and third graders. Oh, my gosh, I got to talk for 40 minutes, I'm sorry, for 20 minutes to each class about litter. That's what we focused on, was the litter with these age groups. My goodness, that was a feat to keep their attention for that long on litter. City manager and staff have been doing a phenomenal job with their budget conversations within the community. I have had the privilege to be able to attend all four of them. Very well-received. The question and answers from the citizens has been very, very good. And I have to give kudos to the city manager and staff for putting together such a wonderful presentation. I can't wait for that to be shared publicly. For those that could not attend, hopefully, they'll be able to record it for that kind of thing to share later. The $100 spending spree to put between the pillars, what a fantastic idea. I think it would go really well hand-in-hand for a presentation to be shared along with the link to that virtually for those that couldn't attend. I also went to the River Road groundbreaking. I also had the opportunity to talk with Commissioner Constance. And I also gave public comment today at their meeting, their Charlotte County meeting. And I was basically asking and hoping that they would find a value in holding a joint meeting. As a commission, we have been asking for five years to have a joint meeting. That has never come to fruition for a multitude of reasons. They have a new county administrator. We have a new city manager. I would really like to see if we can get a consensus to send another request to Charlotte County to hold a joint meeting. If we don't keep asking, we're never going to get a yes. And I think the time is ripe, because the county commissioners heard me ask for a joint meeting, whereas before, I don't think that ask made it down to them. So as soon as I'm finished with my commission comments, I will ask for that consensus. I also attended the ribbon cutting for the new public safety complex out there at Station 86. Wow. That's all I got to say. What a beautiful facility. The employee awards, my gosh, HR does such a phenomenal job recognizing years of service to our employees. I enjoy going to that. It is quarterly. But that, to me, is one of those things that should be done at our recognition meetings, so that way then it's televised, they can share it, they can invite people here for it if they would like to. It's also then in the agenda. Their name is in the agenda. It really is giving recognition like recognition should be done, instead of just a separate meeting. So I don't know if city manager would consider that. I'm throwing it out there. It's truly a way to give recognition. So with that, Mayor, I am finished with my commission comments, but I do want to get a consensus to see if we could have the city manager send a letter requesting a joint meeting with Charlotte County to their county administrator with the Charlotte County commissioners.
Go ahead. What's your response? Yes?
I'm a yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Commissioner or Vice Mayor Langdon?
I'm a no, because I think there's a more effective approach. I think we should personally call on various members of the county and have a conversation where we can discuss our mutual interests and figure out the path forward as a team.
Your audio.
I am so sorry. I think that a direct approach would be a more effective approach. And I think our city manager and whoever on this board is so inclined can call on commissioners and have a conversation about areas of mutual interest. My personal feeling is sending letters for a fifth or sixth year has not been a successful approach. So I think we need to hunker down and figure out a better way of making it happen. And for me, it's eyeball to eyeball, and that's what I would recommend as our path forward.
Well, that didn't pass.
Well, I'll speak to it also. The reason I think the joint meeting with the two commissions is important is because, and Mayor, you stood there and you heard the urgency that Dave made, that there needed to be some sort of action. So the two commissions getting together shows an initial interest. But I agree with Vice Mayor, around the table to hammer stuff out needs to be a bigger audience. But the reason that I wanted the two commissions or threw that out was so that it can come quickly. And the two, the two parties can say, yes, those interchanges are important, and we need that larger table sit-down of all the partners coming together, because there's a lot of partners that need to come together. But getting that initial nod from everybody, figuring out who all needs to come to the table, I think we need that initial meeting to be smaller between the two of us and get it done as quickly as possible for Dave.
Yeah, and let me be clear. I agree that we need to have a joint meeting. I think the best way to get that agreement to do it is not a letter, it's a personal approach. So, and I think that can be done quickly.
All right, moving on. City managers report.
Oh, wait, I didn't give my comment.
You didn't?
No.
Nope, sorry, you are last on my list, okay? Go right ahead.
Yes. I am clean-up, I know that, okay? Yeah, Earth Day was great at Atwater.
The singing commissioner.
Yeah.
No kidding. With her guitar and everything.
Yeah, I come prepared. Is Laura still here? Yeah, she said, right, she came after me, and you said, she said something like, I'm a hard act to follow, or something like that. But you had different kids coming in, so they wouldn't know. Yes, I read my own book, The Adventures of Cowboy Jake, which really does embrace all of the natural flora of Florida, so that tied right in. And also, I was, Friday, I was at Lamarck. They did a remake learning, but it was really a community event, started at 5:00, but it was really about Earth Day. And I know our utilities was there, and a lot of city of Northport departments were represented there, so that was, that was great. I know we're having tree plantings this Friday, yeah, at McKibben Park and Marina Park. All right, so that's two trees. Okay, we got two trees. Okay. We really need to step up our game and get more trees in the ground. We certainly see the deforestation going on in our city, and we really need to get those trees, more trees in the ground. Yes, I was at the ribbon cutting at the public safety building. I was just amazed at the food that was there, the cupcakes they made, the display. I was asking, what are they going to do with that display afterwards? They had a little fire truck thing there and a little, but I think somebody said that goes back with whoever was the one who catered that.
Well, yeah, the police department one was covered in doughnuts.
Yes, and I just thought, wow, they did a lot of work just to display doughnuts on there, but I liked that. And I was just enthralled with that old fire truck. The budget meetings, too, I really love that approach of getting out there in the community and having people the opportunity to get involved with that. And I am now a member of the Florida Urban Tree Council, and that's through my years of talking with the FDOT landscape architect for our district, Darrell Richard. We've had many conversations about plantings along 75, especially the last one that happened on Sompur, which was all native plantings except for the little lilac-looking bushes there. They're Florida-friendly, but they're not, they're not Florida, I mean, they're not native. And so I just wanted to bring that up, that there's another tree connection that I have there. And what else? Oh, yes, our two home rule heroes here, Commissioner McDowell and Luke. I just think that's amazing that you. I just think that's, that's amazing that you two go through those great lengths to, to really hammer in the importance of home rule, which for most citizens, they don't, they don't understand home rule. It's just the ability of municipalities to, to make our own rules, so to speak, or just decide ourselves what we want to see as a community and not have to be hammered from above because our state legislators just continue to chip away at our ability to, for the citizens in their own municipality to make those decisions. And just really bothered by that a lot. And again, yes, in closing, Tree Fair this Saturday. Yeah, very excited, very excited that we're, we're trying, we're finally getting some synergy going here, because of the Pet Expo going on at the Mullen Center. I also heard that the police department is doing their hand-in, hand-in-your-old-prescription-drug type thing. They're doing that. And also, there's a ribbon cutting of a new food truck going on from the chamber. I saw that came across our email. And I already talked to that woman because she didn't realize there was something going on at the, at the City Center Green, and I said, oh, yeah, there's a lot going on there. So there's going to be a lot on Saturday, and I'm really excited about that, that whole thing. So that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just one thing. Our budget presentation that we have been doing out in the community, it is online, it's on our website, as well as our last day is for May 11th. It will be here in the chambers. We will be opening that up to those who can participate online and virtually, so therefore we can field questions and answer them from the public without them actually being here on May 11th. So that should increase participation as well. Thank you.
City Attorney.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. City Clerk, thank you, too. It's 9:08, we are adjourned.
All right.